I'd like to convene a business meeting of February 10th. A motion to do so. Second?
Second.
Okay, I'd like to start with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the listed agenda items. No? Okay, so the first item on our agenda then is the consent agenda.
This author approved the consent agenda items two through six presented to the board of this meeting.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Felina, will you?
Second.
The consent agenda tonight includes approval of minutes from the business meeting of January 27, approval of CSE CPSC placements, additions to the 2021-22 substitute listing, an approval or an amending of additional work hours for certain staff members, and approval of mid-year in-service and graduate credits for staff members.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Dr. Luft.
All right, good evening, everyone. Do want to just acknowledge that Ms. Yedder is joining us tonight virtually, so you'll see her face on the computer up here in the front, and you'll hear her place her votes via PA and speaker in this room. So, just so you're wondering who the voice behind the wall is, it's Ms. Yedder. All right, so that brings us to this evening, and it's actually one of our favorite things to do on the board, and it's to recognize some of our community members, our staff, our students, with our Pride and PV Award. So, this evening's award recognizes one of our school bus drivers, and it's really an opportune time for us to take a moment and thank all of our bus drivers, our monitors. And I especially want to thank our staff members who helped facilitate arrival and dismissal. I had recently emailed them to thank them. They're out there in the rain, in the snow, in the sleet, in the hail. It doesn't matter what the weather is. Those staff members are out there waiting to greet our children first thing in the morning, the first faces they see, and then also say goodbye to them in the afternoon, the last faces they see before they leave. So, I do want to recognize all of those individuals for the role they play in keeping our students safe each day. So that brings us to this evening. This evening, I want to take the opportunity to recognize Mr. Joe Torres with our Pride and PV Award. The quick summary of what brought Joe here this evening. In response to the tragic apartment fire in the Bronx in early January, Joe Torres jumped into action and organized a donation drive in support of the families affected. On a cold Saturday morning, Joe loaded a bus full of donated, a bus donated for use by his employer, Orange County Transit, and headed to the Bronx to make a delivery of toiletries, clothing, toys, food, and kindness on behalf of our community and others. Joe's retired from retail banking and has coached youth sports for nearly 30 years. He began driving a school bus in early 2020 for Orange County Transit. His strong sense of community has resulted in numerous examples of volunteerism that support those in need. So for anyone who's out there during arrival and dismissal and sees Joe come and go, he's got the biggest smile on his face, and there are many who love driving a bus as much as Joe does. But certainly, his efforts to help those in need, we thought was fitting to recognize Mr. Joe Torres with our Pride and PV. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Luft, board members. It's been a long time since I've been at a school board meeting. I live up in Dutchess County, Wappingo Falls, and spent nine years as a PTA Executive Board Member, PTA Council Executive Board Member. So, nine years of PTA meetings and school board meetings at a much larger crowd. I thank you all for what all of you do. I want to express thanks again to Orange County Transit. That wasn't an easy ask. I also want to express a lot of thanks to Jeannie. The fact that she put that on the Facebook page. The parents really turned out. My fellow drivers, everybody turned out. But most of all, it was the parents. And as Dr. Luft said, I have a smile every day. I come to work smiling. I leave every day with an even bigger smile. Why? Because every day, I have the distinct privilege of driving the world's most precious natural resource every single day, and that's our kids. So I thank you all for all that you do, and if something happens again, believe it, I'll step up. Thank you all.
All right, so from here, we're going to transition to our presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be from our high school, so I'd like to welcome Dr. Seppi and Mr. Mello up to the mic.
So we're going to try two mics here. We'll see how it goes. So I have Mr. Mello with me tonight, our Assistant Principal, and I wanted to start the presentation by thanking the Board of Education because today, we had visitors from Redhook come, and they wanted to see our schedule and our community lunch, and it really helped us to reflect on all the things we've done over the past three or four years, between a new block schedule, between a community lunch, going to IB. And really, that was all possible because of the support of the Board of Education. And I want to thank you because really, the kids showed us today how much these things have benefited them, and I wanted to start by mentioning that. Am I in presentation mode?
Nope.
Much better, thank you. So today, again, I wanted to start with our PVHS highlights, and really, I should start it as thriving. How have we gotten back to normal, or how are we working to get back to normal after this pandemic? And how are students thriving, and how is faculty thriving at the high school? So today, we did have about 10 people total from Redhook come to visit. They met with teachers, they met with students, and I have to say, well, I was very appreciative of everything the teachers did. The students warmed my heart, and I'm going to, I'm going to put Dom on the spot over there because, first of all, look at how finely dressed he is in his tie and suit. What an excellent representation of our high school. And student government met with them at the end of the day to debrief a little bit, and the teachers asked them questions, and then also, we had some other, throughout the day, NHS members give tours of the building to the Redhook, and they were just amazed at just the, how nice everybody was, how the students went out of their way to help them, just the friendly atmosphere. And I just want to refer to what Dom said in, do you remember what you said that warmed my heart in the interview this afternoon?
Which part?
The brotherhood. Brotherhood.
What I said was that the community lunch really brings together all different classes. It isn't a stereotypical high school with seniors picking on freshmen or that sort of, you know, community. It's really, you know, a brotherhood. It's really a knight, a closely knit community, and it truly brings out the best in others when you see a senior sitting next to a freshman, sitting next to a sophomore, everyone being able to come together and overcome their differences and just enjoy the school.
No, and again, thank you, Dom, for saying that because that's always been our goal at the high school, is to strive to make sure everyone feels included, everyone feels a part of something, and, and hearing that today really said we're on the right track. And throughout our presentation tonight, we're not really introducing any new initiatives. We've done the big movement. We've done the change to block scheduling. We keep evolving. We've done the community lunch. We're implementing IB. Tonight, our presentation is going to be about how to enhance those things and keep improving. So I'm going to have Mr. Mello talk a little bit about a couple of things we're doing to improve student life.
Yeah, all right, great. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to kind of present a bunch of these things to the, you know, Putnam Valley community. I think there's a lot of great things going on. I gotta say, I really enjoy my job. I can come to work and I can enjoy my job. And one of the things that really highlights that is a day like today. You know, there's challenges, every job has challenges, but I can come to work, and we've got students like Dom, a whole bunch of other students throughout this building, and you can tell they really enjoy being here, you know? It's one of those things where it really lights up the hallways, and you, you, maybe you take it for granted here and there, but then when you have another school visit, and you really get to see all these students and all these really nice comments that they have. We didn't coach them. We weren't like, okay, we need you to tell them, you know, that, that our teachers are awesome. They came out with all those things themselves, even though that's not what Redhook was here for. They were here to see block scheduling, community lunch, and those kinds of things. Yet, our students, you really heard these great things coming from our students about the school, and not just the students, the staff as well. So it was like, you know, really refreshing to see that, but that's what makes this job so great. So, sorry, I went off on a little tangent. We have a couple of things that are going on right now. PVHS volleyball tournament during lunch. The, the Zed teachers every year organize this tournament. The students love it. They give up their lunchtime to come out for some physical activity, a lot of trash talking, those kinds of things going on. But it's a great, you know, event that happens each year, and the students really get into it. The other thing that, we have, we'll switch to academic kind of situation here. The IB program, every IB class has what we call an internal assessment. That's an IA because our science IB courses are taught in one year as well as our psychology course. Those courses, we carved out an IA day for those students. So on, say, Tuesday, IB bio students did not go to their regular scheduled classes. They did their IB internal assessment work on that day. The reason why that's important with sciences and psychology, they have experiments that they have to do. They need data that they have to collect, and so this gives them the day to work with other students in the building to help that, you know, them with that research that they're doing. So it was a great experience. Like, if you could have walked into the classroom, like, I walked into the physics room, I walked into the psychology room, and they weren't just there, though. They were all over the building. Some of them were in the wellness center doing experiments in there, in the library, in the gym, in the weight room, the sports, exercise, and health medicine class. They were using all kinds of different facilities. And so they're using that for data collection for their IAs. So it was a great experience to see, that was last week, that we had these IA days built in for those classes and those students who got a lot of that IA work done during that time. Next, we have, you want this?
Walk across America, which I think some of the district office is involved in. So Andrea Billy and Ryan Elsasser started this a couple of years ago in honor of Mr. Trabakino, who passed away. And this is to, you know, get everybody heart healthy, and so people sign up, they donate money, and the money is then given in a scholarship to a PVHS senior. And everybody records their steps, and then they move us in a map across the country to see who gets to the Pacific coast first. So we challenged everybody to get on board, and throughout the district, there's over 100 people now this year who are walking across America in teams, and it's really wonderful. We have almost $700 collected for the scholarship for the senior, which I'm happy to see because I'd love to see more scholarships for our seniors that were available. And it's just going to be a good event to get outside, get heart healthy, and overcome, you know, the, really, years now we've had of the pandemic. But it's a good opportunity for camaraderie and a good spirit.
The other thing we're doing, you know, through building steering, working with amongst the students, one of the feedback we got from students is they want more events, you know, they want more places to go to hang out with friends. And so really, it's, it's the students that are driving us towards some of these spring events. A spring spirit meet, a spring fling. Sandy Novoselov's I Love Dances. So it's very exciting to be able to do one, one in the spring as well. So all great stuff, but it's directed by the students. They're really the ones driving that. You know, Dr. Seppi and I are just like, okay, we're here, whatever it is, we'll get it done. And then the last thing, we just had a blood drive the other day, it's the second one that the National Honor Society's done. I would sign up for a late date, a late time on that because, you know, like, I don't want to, like, have everybody watch me, you know, bobble as they get off the table and try and make it over to, like, you know, the apple juice and cookies, you know, so I can get back out with my day. So I hope it's the end of the day, so it's less conspicuous for me. But it's great, you know, we've got it in the pack. The people come in, are really good, quick, nice, easy process to donate some blood. You know, obviously, there's a shortage of blood out there, there always is, especially now where, during the pandemic, they haven't had as many blood donations as we've had in the past. So it's great to see that, second of that, of that just happening.
Been doing a wonderful job with National Honor Society and the students, Amanda Orlando, Olivia Goncalves, working to promote that blood drive, and they have collected more pints the past, this past year than they have previously before the pandemic. And it just shows you, the students from, they want to get back involved, they want to contribute to society, they want to participate in society, and we're very happy to see that. So just beginning with some nuts and bolts items, so a little PVHS enrollment overview. As we know, population in the high school is slowly, you know, diminishing a little bit. Three or four years ago, we were about 560, 580. We had a large class last year of 156 that has now graduated out of the building. So we're about approximately, give or take, on a certain day, about 530 students. And we're pretty even, 135, 140 next year, 123, 132. Now, how does this relate to the budget? One of the things is, while our enrollment is slowly declining, we do have other needs that we have to consider, and we do have a growing ENL population. But that, while we have had to hire in that area ENL support, we have, when we've had retirements or other people who have left us, we have not had to replace them. So you could see back in 2018, 19, we had 56 teachers. For next year, we're projected to be around 52. And we do share staff with the middle school, so that is in there, give or take. We have point twos or point fours. Otherwise, we're very consistent, and we've reduced our clerical staff. Four years ago, we had, in 2017, 2018, we had four 12-month clerical. Now we have three 12-month and one 10-month. And this you've seen before. This was my little vision of the house at PVHS and how everything is connected. And most important to Mr. Mello and I is the social-emotional piece for students. How are they feeling? Are they feeling stressed or anxious? And Dom, I'm going to keep putting you on the spot, but remember, there was one day where I came into TOK, and I asked how everybody was doing, and they were very stressed because they needed more time to work on certain projects, and I said, okay, we'll go back and get that for you. And we created some core days for the students to get some of their major papers done and things like that to kind of assist them along the way. So the social-emotional well-being of our students is extremely important, and I do want to compliment Mr. Mello, who really goes out of his way to teach students empathy, to be very compassionate to students, and work with them in a manner where he's teaching them good behaviors, and it's not just about consequences. And as we could see here, the roof is the International Baccalaureate Program, and it's important to note that the IB program covers all of the things that we do in school. IB is very, very focused on social-emotional well-being of students and wants to create students who are caring, who are responsible, who are balanced, who are principled. And that's part of the social-emotional learning we do every day. So some people incorrectly might think that IB is just for a few distinct students, and that is not the case. We are an IB world school, and that means that IB, the philosophy of IB, the interdependentness, the international-mindedness, all these different philosophies, the mission, the core, the IB profile, all touch all students within the school. This is something that is in ninth grade classes as embedded, it's in 10th grade classes, and we made sure when we started to implement this program that all English teachers were trained in IB so that they could start to incorporate these qualities into their classes. And they do lessons on the, or learner profile, they are working on the skills needed for 11th grade. So it's really important to note that we are a school that focuses on all these important approaches to teaching through IB and teaching inquiry, and that's good teaching. That's not IB. Teaching through inquiry is good teaching. Letting students develop questions, letting them do the research, letting them come up with the data. That's good instruction, and that's what IB focuses on. So it's not just 11th and 12th graders that are doing that. That happens 9 through 12. Want to talk about theory of knowledge?
My mic on? All right, good. So, theory of knowledge, you know, really, we can, in a nutshell, kind of say, like, it's teaching students to, you know, understand why they think, right? Teaching students to have a theoretical understanding of why they might know something, and then be able to, you know, prove why they do know things. So, you know, I'm sure Dom could enlighten us even more about the TOK classes because he is involved in that, and I've seen some, like, amazing, you know, stuff going on in the TOK classes. Dom?
So we just finished the first cohort, which means I have finished the TOK program because it was from the second semester of last year to the first semester of this year. And it is difficult to describe because it is such a wonderful class, and it doesn't neatly fit into any category. It's not simply a philosophy class or an ethics class. It's not you sitting around pondering all day. It's you legitimately looking at not only our history, but our cognitive thought and our interaction with the world around us, both natural and technological and societal, and seeing how that interaction affects you. And Dr. Messera teaches the class so well, keeps us so engaged. There's never a dull moment. I, I enjoy the class, honestly. It was a great experience. I loved it.
And of course, what we're focusing on, we want to teach students to understand multiple perspectives, right? Especially in this world today, we have a lot of division, we have a lot of separation, and we want to teach students to understand all perspectives and to make their own choices and their own decisions. And that's one of the things that all classes focus on through this program.
So, again, we talk about IB for all, and we talk about the benefits to all students. And I know, like, IB is an 11th and 12th grade program, but, you know, all of those ideas and principles that we're, and skills that we're trying to get those students to develop in 11th and 12th grade or master in 11th and 12th grade are being developed in 9th and 10th grade as well. So there's kind of like this, you know, trickle-down effect with IB in raising the bar for students, you know, starting in 9th grade, working up to 10th grade, and then being able to attempt these, you know, higher-level courses in 11th and 12th grade. You know, I think that's like, one of the things, a hidden benefits of IB. Everybody sees it as a program for 11th and 12th grade, but it's really the foundation built in 9th and 10th grade based on the IB aspects that is going to allow those students to be more well-rounded when they leave Putnam Valley.
And again, there are many schools around the country that are working towards project-based learning. With IB courses, we're already there. That is what kids are doing. They are driving their own learning by choosing topics of their own interest, and it's not just the diploma candidates. That's happening in all IB classes, and that is project-based learning. They're taking real-life issues, applying the knowledge that they know, and solving problems. I already mentioned the learner profile and how students are, you know, we really work to create these types of students, and also, IB has a focus on civic activity. You just gave a wonderful, you know, PV Pride Award for community service. That's what IB focuses on. How do you help others? How do you teach others how to reflect? How do you teach others skills? Just a really focus on the community and bringing everybody together. And, you know, also, of course, very important is that it's a well-rounded program. It involves the arts, it involves music, it involves film, English, sciences. Students need to take every course to develop their skills, and then they can make choices about what they want to do afterwards. I just threw this picture in. This is drawn by Treat Thorpe, one of our seniors. This was our aspire winner, and I love it because it shows, you know, everybody working together towards lifting up the earth and really kind of represents international-mindedness, connectedness, and the coming together and the brotherhood that Dom spoke about earlier. The big question is, how do we continue to academically challenge and inspire students at our school? And what would be the budgetary implications of that? So we have, do have a few new courses. We have some really interesting ones, Real World Financial Literacy, Crypto, Real Estate, and more. You know, if you haven't heard, the young people really are into the whole crypto craze, and so this is a way to teach them about it, teach them about real estate, real financial terms, and getting an understanding of that. We also have Spanish for native speakers. We do have many, many native speakers now who speak very fluent Spanish, but we need a way to challenge them, so we're looking at offering the Spanish for native speakers course, a marketing and social media course. So if you've scrolled through TikTok or Instagram or Facebook, you see that there's a lot of advertising, and it's a lot of social media advertising where people learn, you know, six-second videos and how to advertise their product in six seconds. And that's some of the things that they would be doing in this course, learning about how to showcase their skills. And then we also have anticipated a district Mandarin position that would have some part-time classes in the high school. Also, we need a SEAL of Civic Readiness Advisor. We have had a couple of teachers working on this this year. This is a pilot program, which Putnam Valley High School is honored to be a part of. Only about 66 schools in the state, I believe, are a part of the pilot. We are one of them. And really, what the students are required to do is quite similar to what IB classes require. Students have to identify a civic issue, a problem facing them, facing their community, facing their school, analyze the issue, and they have to present both sides of the issue. What are the, both points of the issue? They have to offer solutions. They have to present this to the rest of the class, and it's really a quite challenging project. And so far, we've had 20 students who've received the SEAL based on their past history of passing US and global Regents classes and also from doing this extra project. So we look forward to the spring when we're going to have more students who take participation in government the second half of the year, working on this capstone project. And it's really working, again, on those skills of choosing something of their interest, whether it's recycling, whether it's something with the environment, looking how it affects their community, presenting all sides of it, and coming up with solutions.
The other thing we want to highlight is the academic rigor, you know, and where that's gone over the past couple of years. And really, it's driven by IB and, and the excitement within the building, you know, about IB from the students. I want to point this out. There are 114 seniors taking an IB Language and Literature. So that's 114 out of our 156 seniors that are taking an IB course in their senior year. Like, if you go back, we probably, like, had, you know, on a good year, 50 or 60 students taking higher-level courses as seniors because, generally speaking, seniors, right, have this major push in the fall, and then it's like, okay, we got accepted into colleges and things like that, and they kind of want to relax. Well, these students can't relax, right, because they're taking IB courses. I, I think it's amazing. Last year, we had 79 seniors. This year, 114. That's 74% of your senior class. That's like unheard of. It's unbelievable. We're so excited about that. You know, it just says a lot about how the students will challenge themselves, given the opportunity. And they understand the benefits of taking these courses. We also have 98 students taking IB exams in chemistry, biology, physics, and sports, exercise, and health sciences. I think last year, we had about 66 students doing that. 79 students taking IB individuals and societies. And then the other thing that we're seeing is more students at a younger age taking AP exams. So we pushed our AP exams down into 9th and 10th grade. And let me tell you, most students do not have the maturity, right? The academic maturity, you know, to write those essays and things like that. But they're taking those courses anyway. And they're learning and developing those skills that are going to just benefit them later on. So 50 freshmen taking AP World History. You know, if you look, you know, nationwide, you know, there might be only like five or six schools nationwide that are doing AP World History in 9th grade. Those students will then go on to AP European History in 10th grade and then on to IB, which is Individuals and Societies. And then we also have 44 sophomores taking AP English. And that number just keeps moving up and up. So it's great to see the rigor that's in place and that students are rising to that occasion and taking on those challenges academically. And it's only going to benefit them moving forward. Next, you know, we talk about what we have to make sure that we're doing. IB being a program, the International Baccalaureate is very concerned with making sure that schools that have the IB program are staying current. You know, they're following the plans that are set in place. And it forces you as a school district to kind of reflect every five years because they're going to send evaluators in to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to, to meet the needs of the students and capture, you know, really what is the heart of the IB program and make sure that we're following all that. So in 2023, 2024, we'll have our five-year evaluation. So that means that we need to start planning now to make sure that we are ready for the evaluation in 2023, 2024. But, you know, what this allows us to do is one of the basic tenets of IB, continually reflect on what you do. We ask the students to reflect. It's embedded in like everything that they do in IAs and things like that. We ask the teachers, they're supposed to reflect on what they did with their, you know, approaches to teaching this year and then the adjustments that they're going to have to make in the following years. And we also ask the district to reflect on what we're doing and how we're meeting the needs of the teachers and the students. So there's a lot to look at there over the course of the next year. And, you know, we're excited about it. And it's allowing us to kind of like, okay, where were we three years ago when we started this program? Where are we now? And where do we need to be in the next two years? So it keeps you focused on vision and making sure that you keep, you know, looking at what you're doing and correcting, adjusting your vision moving forward so that you're continually working at meeting the needs of a changing academic society that's out there.
And I also just want to add in that many schools in our region pay extra to be part of the tri-states consortium or the middle states consortium, which are evaluation programs for schools. And those are rigorous process. But because we have IB, that's in a constant state of evaluation and reflection, we don't have to pay extra money to be part of those consortiums because we have our own evaluation and reflection process. So it's just, it's good to note that there's always this cycle in place where we're looking at our unit planning. We're looking at our curriculum. We're looking at our approaches to teaching so that we can keep improving for our students. Social emotional learning. How do we continue to help students navigate adolescence? You might have seen this past week, I sent out an email about cellphone use. And we really have seen an uptick in the use of cellphones by students since the pandemic. It can at times be problematic. So I put out some solutions to kind of partner with parents and help with that problem. It is something that we struggle with every day and we're working towards, you know, trying to educate students. And certainly, that is something that we look for for the future. We have not really had many assemblies because of the COVID pandemic. But we look forward next year to bringing more speakers in, inspirational speakers, speakers who can talk about the dangers of cellphone use, vaping, et cetera. We also have to update our classroom furniture. We were on a good cycle for a little while, but we paused for the pandemic and for other needs in the district. And now, moving forward, we have a few classrooms that we need to replace. So we're working on that with Mr. Spittle and Dr. Luft. And then also, again, in our building steering, it was really great talking to the students because we were talking about the cellphone issue and we were talking about the anonymous Instagrams and things like that that post things that are hurtful and how do we combat those things? So we talked about having student forums and what that might look like. So we're in the process of thinking about how to do this now. It is, it really would be a quite a feat to get one of these done before the end of the year, but we're going to try. And then also, of course, academic competitions like science research. When Red Hook came today, one of the things Mr. Zupan noted, they were so impressed with our science research program that they want to start one in their school. So it's nice to like spread that learning. And one of our new clubs this year, because really, clubs are one of the most important things for social emotional learning, where students can feel like they belong, they can contribute, participate, build bonds with each other. And we had a first Science Olympiad this past Sunday. We sent two teams up to Wappingers who competed. And I think it was almost like 15, around 15 on each team. And we got eight medals out of 33. So I listed there the different areas that we got medals in. Anatomy, physiology, cell biology, disease detectives, dynamic planet, green generation, bottle rocket parachute, remote sensing, and catapult trajectory. So I don't know. Dom, do you have anything to add about the Science Olympiad?
I was in it. I was in the competitions. I would like to say it was a great success. Especially for being our first year. You know, being able to endure such academic hardship, especially with such rigorous courses, both in terms of building different, you know, structures, like an actual catapult, a catapult that had to accurately hit a target. And we won a medal in that. It is absolutely amazing that we were able to do that within our first year. You know, the, it is difficult to underestimate the intelligence of the students at the school and the capacity that we can have.
I agree. And we were competing against some very large schools like Kingston, the Wappingers District. I'm trying to think of other larger, Arlington. So those are many times our size. And we certainly held our own for our first year. It was extremely impressive. And I think the kids had a great time. Another one of our really popular clubs is e-gaming called the PV Ambush. And these are our big trophies we won last year. And I want to thank Dr. Luft, who is giving us the nicer grant for $1,000. And that's going to help with equipment for the e-gaming club. And again, it's another way for kids to feel connected, feel a part of something, and it's a lot of enthusiasm for it. And then I also put the guitar club up here because again, that's another very popular club where all students, and this is an example of what we were talking about. In one of those pictures is a 9th grader and a senior sitting together. You could see in another picture, if you look up closely in the back, there's students helping each other learn, students in a circle together. We have one of our classified students there who's participating, learning the guitar. So it really is a place where all students can come together, learn something new, and enjoy each other's company. And then we want to end with congratulating our newly-named valedictorian and salutatorian. Our valedictorian would be Fiona Chen and our salutatorian, Michael Haloyak. And we're so proud of them. They took rigorous course loads and they did very well. And so we gave them all the special praise and pictures and celebrity attention yesterday. And besides being an awesome assistant principal, Mr. Mello also takes an awesome selfie. So we put him to work to celebrate with us.
That's my daughter that gives me that ability. But yeah, like I said before, the students at this school are amazing. I'm just thinking about Dom and, you know, you know, all the things that he's involved in. He's a diploma candidate, which, you know, it's an intense, you know, two-year program that he's involved in. And there's no, like, you didn't have lunch for a year, right? Because you had a class during his lunchtime, you know, because of that. So it's just amazing to see that. And then, you know, to be there with the valedictorian and salutatorian, Fiona Chen and Michael Haloyak yesterday. And just to see, like, the amount of hard work, you know, time and effort that it takes to put yourself in that position and to see how happy they were, you know, when we were able to tell them that they were the valedictorian and salutatorian. It was just, it was just great. It's one of those moments, you can tell they really appreciated, you know, the congratulations. But they also appreciated their classmates because the classmates kind of came out. We're sitting there like, you know, this is unbelievable, great, you know? So it's a moment that we get to see in school that maybe not everybody else out there gets to see. But it's one of those, like, you really get to appreciate the children at Putnam Valley and everything that they do to make a great experience for themselves and their fellow classmates here in Putnam Valley. So it's great. Congratulations to all of them.
Any questions?
I was going to ask Dom if you guys rehearsed this and if that's why he wore the suit.
Didn't you have a math presentation today, too?
Yes. I promised my math teacher that for a major project in IB math, I would wear a suit. And it's very interesting, within IB math, there's not only just the standard teaching and test, but there's also projects and presentations to be able to show your full understanding. So just today, I had to do a presentation on a complex calculus optimization problem to be able to show my understanding at each step and be able to answer questions regarding different sections of the problem itself. So to be in a program like that, that pushes you not only in your ability to cram formulas, but be able to understand the wider world, is wonderful. And also, it was nice to see the Red Hook representatives like this.
Yeah, and congratulations. Okay, so let me just, thinking about Dom talking about his math class. But there are a lot of kids that are not in that math class. So like, what is, like, and those teachers are amazing teachers. I mean, just because they're not teaching the IB math course doesn't mean that they're not amazing teachers and then they're not reaching students, a variety of students. So can you kind of give me some, I mean, you kind of talked about it, about how the philosophy of IB is permeating all classes. And all kids are feeling that. And because I, because I'm concerned about all of them, not just some of them. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know if I'm being clear, but...
One of the things that I've always promoted since we've really started talking about the IB program is it's IB for all. So we are one of the only schools in the country that gives IB English for every junior. And that's included our special ed students. And they thrive in there and they do amazingly well. And we've had special education teachers say to us, well, you know, at first they thought, well, I'm not sure if they're going to be able to do this. And then they see through the scaffolding of information and through the teaching of skills, that the students are able to do it quite successfully. And so really, what we have to look at is good teaching. And good teaching and approaches to teaching, which is what IB promotes, is about teaching skills, teaching inquiry, teaching writing, teaching speaking skills. So that's not the content. That's not like, this is what happened in the Civil War. That's, this is how you would approach a point-of-view essay in social studies. And these are the skills you need. And this is how you support a claim. And this is where you get the research for that. And these are the places that you can go for that. And then we work on analytical skills. So whether it's math, science, social studies, all the different skills it takes to be a scientist, a historian, a writer. Those are the skills that are worked on in 9th and 10th grade so that students are prepared to continue in the IB program. So just like with the Civic SEAL program, what we found is students did struggle with this project because it takes speaking skills to get up and talk about a topic of their choice and their interest, present the research, talk about opposing viewpoints, take questions and be able to answer them confidently. That's not something that you just can learn in a year. And so we've looked at how to backward map those skills in going all the way back to 6th, 7th, 8th grade. Every year, students should be getting up, you know, having a short topic that they can talk about, support a claim, present both sides so that they're ready when they get to 11th grade because then it's so much easier for them. It's not something new.
Barbara, I'm glad you mentioned like math as well. Because like, one of the things that, you know, when we were talking to Red Hook, you know, faculty that came to visit, one of the things that they were talking about, the community lunch. And, you know, during community lunch, math teachers are giving up lunchtime and they're doing extra help with the students. And that's not just IB students. That's any student, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, that is utilizing that time to be out there with their math teachers. It's pretty amazing. Like, the first 15 minutes of that community lunch, 9th and 10th graders are in a skills class. 11th and 12th graders are visiting all their teachers to go and get extra help in whatever it is they might need extra help in. And I got to throw it out there to the math teachers. They do an amazing job of making themselves accessible during that community lunch because they know math is a very difficult subject. And it doesn't matter if it's, you know, Algebra I, geometry, they're all available and it's amazing. So the Red Hook people noticed that and understood that and were like, well, this is great. This is going on during community lunch. And, you know, those teachers are giving up their lunchtime to be able to help those other students. You know, they're eating their lunch while the students are in the room with them and they're going over problems with them. It is amazing. So, you know, I know we talk about IB and Dom uses all these terms that I don't understand in math. It's way above my, you know, my understanding. You know, but, but there's that. But there's also all these other things that are going on to make sure that those other students have the skills they need in the math level that they're at to be successful in whatever they're going to do moving on.
Comes in the fact that there's different levels within IB. There's higher-level classes. There's standard-level classes. There's some classes that don't have a designation. So you could be in an IB class, but it doesn't mean that you're an IB diploma candidate. So what we want is different pathways for students. So students who want to challenge themselves, by all means, we want you to try to be an IB diploma candidate if you want to push yourself to try to do that. But there's many, many IB classes across all the curriculums where if you're really into music and you want to really go into music school, but you don't want to do the whole diploma, well, maybe you're going to take IB music at a higher level. And that class is going to teach you how to write a composition. Or you're going to take English at a standard level. But it's still the same skills where students have to learn to present their thinking, analyze points of view, dissect different types of materials. And really, I think what makes the diploma difficult is that they have to do the extended essay, the CAS, and the TOK on top of all the others. But we have many students who take something in all the different areas. They might just not be doing the core.
Okay, could I, this may be totally off. So when my students, when my children, excuse me, were in high school, they didn't have Putnam Valley High School. They went to Hannis. But a common thing that I heard from my own children and others is like if I'm asking a question in class, social studies class or a math class, a teacher would say, don't worry about it. It's not going to be on the Regents. So it wasn't, the course was end-test-driven. Those classes are still, we still have those classes. We still have Regents classes.
Well, we, because of the pandemic, we haven't given the Regents. I mean, if kids take it this year, we'll see. But it's, we've gone two years without any Regents.
But I was, I was just wondering whether that, the IB could open that up for students so that it was less end-test-driven and more learning-driven is what I'm hoping with this philosophy of learning.
Well, it's about approaches to teaching and how you present the material. And that's, you know, one reason why our teachers are really embracing this and working so hard. So there's a way to present and deliver content which students have to memorize like they did in the AP program. Or students can drive their own learning where they, they don't ask questions. They develop the questions that they want to research. They find the answers. They analyze the answers. They write the end product. That's really the skills in IB. Or they present the information like he was talking about. And again, that's not, you know, just the diploma candidates. Everybody in the 11th... not, you know, just the diploma candidates, everybody in the 11th grade is taking IB English, where they have to learn those skills that are also backward mapped into 10th and 9th grade. So, you know, by all means, yes, we're still gonna have the Regents, but the Regents has called us, and we've had conversations about what we think the end exam should look like, and what we want really qualified students to be when they graduate high school. And it's not just students who are prepared for a test that they forget the information the next day.
Right, and I think that's the secret to Barbara's question. The end result's the same, right? Those students are still sitting down for the same Regents exam at the end of the year, but the approach in which they got there is totally different, right? To your point of like this test-driven class, where you're constantly focused at the Regents at the end of the year, that IB class is the exact opposite of that. It's inquiry-driven, it's all these different approaches to learning, it's developing all these skills, and it's the faith that if you teach students really how to learn, as opposed to how to memorize content, that they will still be successful on that Regents that happens at the end of the year. So it's the exact opposite of what a traditional high school class may be in terms of Regents prep. These classes are teaching students to really learn and still have to take the Regents at the end of the year. So that's one piece. The other piece that I wanted to clarify is that I think we need to get over the mindset of IB courses versus an IB school. And I know that's what we've been talking about for a while now. Some classes start with IB, right, and they're 11th and 12th grade courses, and they could lead to different levels and everything, and that's great. And our participation in those classes is exceptional. But we're an IB school, which means so much more than the classes that start with IB, right? An IB school, as we've revised our 9th and 10th grade curriculums to align them with IB, we've changed how we teach students in 9th and 10th grade to better prepare them for what real-world learning is, right, to teach them to, teach them the foundations of learning, I keep messing it up, right? So by becoming an IB school, we have changed every aspect of every class in the high school, not only the classes that start with the letters IB. And I think we sort of get trapped in that, well, that's an IB course and this one isn't. Well, every teacher in the high school is now teaching with this IB philosophy, and every student in the high school is now learning through that IB philosophy. Similar in elementary school, you may have an elementary school that's a TC school, so they all buy into the same curriculum and the same instructional models, but only 3rd and 4th grade gets tested, right? So it's not only 3rd and 4th grade or TC school, or TC classes, their success is based upon the success of K1 and 2, where they were all working in the same direction. So IB works very much the same way.
Seeing that this is about budget, wondering if you could talk to me about the budget challenges. You said that we're really not looking at any major programmatic changes and not looking at any significant staffing. I just wonder about what you're seeing as challenges moving forward that may or may not have budgetary impact.
Well, I mean, I would see a challenge, and I mentioned this to the faculty since the day I've got here, the fact that we do have a little bit of a diminishing population, as all of New York State does, except for the cities, is a challenge, because, you know, the high school is a smaller population than it was when I first came here seven years ago. And so how to basically meet the needs of those students and maintain the programs is something that we have to do a lot of brainstorming about. Other challenges, again, the growing E&amp;L population, how do we meet those state mandates, is something that can be very complicated, because students get a lot of, they have to be tested and the courses that they're in are mandated, so we have to make their schedules work with the limited amount of staff we have. So sometimes that means teachers might end up with three or four E&amp;L students in their class, but that class is not mandated. That could be a challenge for that teacher to try to work on that content with those students, especially if they speak different languages. So I think the challenges we face are the same challenges that all of New York State faces, that all of the country faces, and it's how to deal with changing demographics.
Can you talk about, obviously, not to belabor the point any further about being an IB school as opposed to having IB classes, talking about the collaboration with the middle school and building that scaffolding. If you could talk a little bit about, you know, kind of what that looks like and feels like, and how that, where the benefits are, or where the missed opportunities may be.
So I think it was the night I might have been approved to be the principal, was the night they adopted 3 and 2 math seven years ago. And 3 and 2 math, well, is a very, very good program, and good in theory. The schools that really kept it were larger schools that offered multiple tracks to students. So if you're in Fox Lane, and, you know, you have your advanced classes, you maybe have these 3 and 2 classes, and then maybe you have more grade-level classes. But for PV, we had moved in a direction where everybody was going to be 3 and 2, which did not leave us with an advanced track. So we've worked with the math department for a couple of years at the middle school and at the high school, to try to realign our math program so that students are ready to take the IB program. So that's really been one of the major focus. We've also, with Dr. Luft, looked at the science department and ways that we could backward map and make sure that we're offering the sciences that students need. I know Mrs. Levine is starting to work with us in the areas of English to make sure that we're consistent with our reading and that all the different genres are covered, and we're at the appropriate age level for the books we're reading. So it's still a work in progress, but it's something that we are striving towards.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just had a couple of things. I just wanted to focus, I really think the presentation focuses on two main aspects. The first being the well-rounded students we're developing here in Putnam Valley, and we talked about many aspects, right, everything from the SEAL civic readiness, to the science research, to clubs and athletics, e-gaming. And I couldn't be more proud of all the opportunities we have for our students and the successes they bring, both academically and through the extracurriculars. And then the other piece that I think really highlighted throughout the presentation is something that I know has been a focus of our high school administration for many years, and that's academic rigor. So I would challenge any neighboring school district of much larger size to compete with some of the numbers that were shared here this evening. Being one of the 60 pilot schools across New York State, we've already had 20 students earn the SEAL civic readiness, and that number will likely increase the second semester. Seventy-three percent of our graduating seniors are taking higher-level courses. That's an unheard-of number in school districts, especially districts our size. We had 145 AP exams completed by freshmen and sophomores. Most schools offer zero AP courses to freshmen and sophomores. And all of that on top of a 98% graduation rate. So I think those numbers speak volumes to the work that's happened here in the high school, how we've increased academic rigor, and how we've found ways for every student to be successful, whether it be extracurriculars, arts, athletics, or academically. So I want to thank you both. I want to especially thank our teachers, and I want to thank mostly Dom, but the other students as well.
And I am gonna add in just a little bit. We've always had a high percentage of our students go off to college, but how many of those students stay in college? How many drop out after a year, after two years, or take six years to finish college? And anecdotally, while it's too soon to get any real figures about how IB is changing that, we have had many students write us in the past year, talking about how much more prepared they feel and how organized they are as compared to their peers, because they've gone through the program. So that's something very important to us, and I just want to end, well, yes, academic rigor is very important. We really care about all the children at the high school and really want to do what's best for them. And, you know, I know Dom saw this today, but while he was talking to the teachers, another student, uninvited, came into the room and introduced themselves and just, you know, wished Red Hook luck and emphasized how much they loved their high school, and that they hoped that we were a positive influence on them, so they could bring back some of these programs to their school. And I was really touched and blown away by that. So I think that's important to mention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jackie Levine to give our presentation on curriculum and instruction.
That is a hard act to follow, but I feel really good, oh, wrong button, sorry about that. Feel really good following such a prime example of the focus on curriculum and instruction here at Putnam Valley. So, good evening, everyone. Dr. Luft, members of the board, and members of our Putnam Valley Central School District community, it's a delight and a privilege to be here to talk about the curriculum and instruction work of our school district. And I'm gonna try to navigate multiple technologies here while I present our 2022-2023 budget. My colleagues know, I really like to start every presentation, grounding everyone in the mission, vision, and goals of our school district. This is the lens through which we look at everything and make every decision here in Putnam Valley. These are our agreements, our commitments to what we do here, and the type of student we hope to create and send on their way into the world. Our goals reflect, learn, and thrive, as decided upon by Dr. Luft and our Board of Education earlier this year, will be the lens through which we go through my presentation this evening, talking about the different ways we are reflecting on what we've done, learning, growing, and of course, thriving. And then this is the biggest lens of all, to look at everything we do here at Putnam Valley. The child first and foremost, we center this in everything we do. We are building a foundation for their future, giving each child what they need to be successful, and hit the ground learning. So Dr. Luft asked me to put together a little slide, and I don't expect anyone to be able to read this tonight, it's very small print, but he did ask me to list some of my roles and responsibilities, because technically, I'm a department of one. But this work cannot be done in isolation, and I am so grateful for the partnership of wonderful leaders like Dr. Seppi and Mr. Mello, and all of our building leaders and all of our teachers, to be able to do the work that we do here in Putnam Valley. If I had to boil this list down to three key roles, I would say that that is leading, learning, and communicating. I lean professional learning and initiatives and curriculum discussion. I spend a great deal of time making sure our communications are put together well for our leaders, our teachers, our community. But this year in particular, because it's my first year, I have spent a lot of time learning about our school, about our curriculum, about our students, our faculty, and it's been an amazing experience. There is nothing better than going from one of our IB English classes, as they're working on their assessments, to our kindergarten class in reading to Mrs. Verdi's kindergarteners. That is the magic of school. And what makes me so proud to be here in Putnam Valley is the level of commitment of all of the faculty, staff, and leadership in this school district. So we're gonna spend a little bit of time reflecting. There's so much that happens in a school year, but I just highlighted a few key things that I would like to talk about today of the work we've been doing. Literacy has been a focus for us this year, starting with our work with the Writing Revolution, which began in the summer when I first started. We had a team of kindergarten through 8th grade turnkey teachers, learning the Hockman method. It's a direct explicit instruction method of writing, teaching our teachers how to support all learners at all levels, how to be strong writers, through a series of steps, a scope and sequence that leads them to creating those really fine paragraphs and those really fine reports and essays, and helping them develop the skills that they need to tackle that rigor up at the high school when they're ready. We are also updating our DRA assessment training, K6. So we're looking at the DRA assessment to help our students, help our teachers identify our students' reading behaviors, and design instruction, like guided reading, specifically for small groups of students. And writing is also a focus in our content areas. Right now, we have a group of science teachers, 7th through 12th, taking a professional learning opportunity during our professional learning each month, with Fred Endy, who's a science writing consultant. So for the unique needs of science, our 7th through 12th grade teachers meet together, and that's teachers from all areas of the science department coming together to talk about writing, looking at the writing continuum for those grade levels as they move up through the grade, and of course, at that top to that IB science level. We know that any initiative cannot be successful without sustained, ongoing, high-quality professional learning. So professional learning is a focus for us. I'm so fortunate to be part of a district that has professional learning hours built into our schedule. Every month, our teachers spend an additional hour after their workday with us to learn and to grow together, to meet as departments, to take workshops with us, to lead workshops with us. I've had the good fortune of co-leading a workshop on the question formulation technique for the high school and middle school teachers with Adele Foster. I've had the opportunity to bring Kristin Iaritzo and Chrissy Phillips to the high school to talk about what Writing Revolution is and teach them, give them an overview of it, not only building that bridge between the youngest students and the oldest students, the teachers of those groups, but also giving them a few strategies along the way, and helping to communicate, once again, talking about that communication piece, helping to communicate what's going on in the district, when buildings can sometimes feel like their own little worlds. Our targeted training opportunities in writing, I've spoken about, but we also have Science 21 Pilot for Grade 5, our teachers are participating in. This is a regional opportunity, where our teachers are helping to design the Science 21 curriculum for the region by participating in a pilot. So our teachers are leading regionally too. I spoke about the question formulation technique, and questioning is so critical to the IB work. And to build those skills for our teachers, we have ongoing international baccalaureate training. We also have leadership learning. Our leaders are part of leadership learning every, to every month. We have different administrative meetings focused on different themes. We also have our leaders participating in regional workshops, forums, and continued sustained learning for themselves. And we are leading regionally. This is Ms. Furlong, our art teacher. She had a proposal into the Curriculum Center Conference in the month of December that was accepted. So she presented regionally for the entire Lower Hudson Valley on our visual arts and social-emotional learning. I want to thank Ms. Furlong for taking that step, taking that risk, and being a leader regionally, keeping Putnam Valley as the instructional leadership that we know it to be. Of course, we know that learning can't really happen for adults or children if they are struggling with social, emotional, and mental health. So that has been a focus for us this year especially. We've continued our training in the therapeutic crisis intervention for schools, that's Dan Turner and Christina Casey, two more of our great teacher leaders, leading a workshop this summer, and they continue to do that, and they continue to receive training themselves, they are certified in this, and they continue to receive that training so that they can continue to bring it back to our schools. We have a K8 team right now, going to a program in Bosse's, virtually right now, not physically, but for our multi-tiered systems of support, all of the systems, all the pieces of the system that we have, to support our students, and forming a team, K8, so that they can come back, come over the summer, plan to implement a full district-wide system for those students. And of course, we can't forget about our teachers. At our Superintendent Conference Day this fall, we held a wellness expo for them, inviting community partners and businesses to show teachers the different resources they have available to them locally, so that they can continue to support their own health and wellness, which is very important to We have had so many events this year, starting in the summer with our student enrichment opportunities, that's a group of middle school and high school students in an art class, an art enrichment. We've had our Superintendent Conference Days, both in August and November, we have one coming up this March. Our new teacher orientation is such a wonderful time to onboard new teachers to our district, welcome them, help them get to know the district, introduce them to all of the leaders, they'll en- encounter, introduce them to their mentors and their union leadership, make sure they really get off on the right foot. They even took a bus ride with Sam Oliverio, and I got to join. Hi, Sam. I got to join that wonderful bus ride and learn all about the Putnam Valley community. The new teacher orientation is really a wonderful opportunity. We've had superintendent listening hours. It's so important for us to hear from the members of our community. So, we've invited members in for multiple superintendent listening hours so that we could have conversations with our parents and our families. And we had our DEI parent work group this summer where our families got together, sat down, and talked about our priorities for that work. I mentioned communication before, and this has been a big part of the communication piece. We have a newsletter issued monthly. It's really wonderful. It's on the website, too. You can click and you can see the link there. It is the opportunity we have to share what's going on in our buildings, in our district, share wonderful news like that of Joe Torres, share the different board members we have and information about them, share PTA news, share PVEF news, and it's really come together nicely. Dr. Luft writes a wonderful message every month. I prompt him for it sometimes, but that's okay.
Is that your way of reminding me I owe you a February message?
I like to stay on track. February 15th, I hope it can be issued again. And all this is to say that the joy of connection and a sense of normalcy sparks our renewed hope for the future and what lies ahead. And we are learning. Like this woman on this bridge, we are going forward. It's a little wobbly. We're not really sure what's behind those trees, but we are learning and we're going forward. This is a new year, and we have new hope. Students are our hope for the future, and education is their hope for them to have pathways to success and endless opportunities. So, we're going to continue to give them the skills they need and continue to grow our program and continue to be the best we can be in multiple areas to be able to provide those skills for them. We're going to continue our focus on literacy. We're going to develop a foundations facilitator. One of our own teachers in our classrooms is going to be so highly skilled in foundations that she'll be able to turnkey it to a number of different teachers and new teachers who join us and leave replacements who join us so that we don't miss a moment for our youngest students for their phonics and their reading comprehension. And that person will help to keep our teachers with fidelity to the foundations program. And with that training comes coaching for all of our teachers, to be able to support all of them in maintaining that fidelity to foundations for that critical learning that we know is so important. Those DRA assessments will be given in the middle school once they've received all the training we're giving them this spring and summer. So, our middle school teachers in fifth grade and sixth grade will know their students well as readers and be able to support them with targeted instruction. We'll have our guided reading training so that our fifth-grade teachers can begin piloting guided reading in their classrooms. Writing Revolution will move beyond the turnkey teachers, and they will have turnkey to their colleagues, and their colleagues will begin implementing Writing Revolution methods in their work. We will continue to focus on writing in the content areas because we know how important that is. All areas, all content areas have writing in them. How do we make ours better? We look forward to a spring literacy academy, hopefully in March, to help our cuspy readers advance, give them that little extra, that little push they need to be able to tackle books at their instructional level. And we look forward to an E&amp;L Academy, an opportunity to bring our parents and our students into the buildings, provide lessons in English language, provide support for parents on how they can support their children at home, and we're looking forward to that in April. We are expanding our Mandarin program. We will be hiring a full-time Mandarin teacher, which will replace our OU Bosse's streamed teaching at this time. Right now, we have Skype a teacher into the classroom, and there's a teaching assistant in the room supporting the students. This will replace that model and allow us to expand into the high school. We will also be adding Grade Three to the current enrichment happening in the elementary school. We are so excited to be able to provide more family engagement opportunities. It will be so nice to have our families back in our buildings, meeting with us, talking with us, having potlucks, sharing great ideas, and working together to build community for our children. Our DEI committee work is continuing. Right now, we're working on revising for a second reading of our policy to the board and deciding upon our goals for the year. This summer, we will have many teams of teachers engaged in curriculum writing and training in literacy, IB, K8 MTSS, that's that multi-tiered systems of support that I was talking about earlier, and even computer science. One really exciting future possibility is examining whether the middle school, the middle years program, is the right fit for our middle school here. You were speaking earlier about what is the connection for the middle school and the high school, and how can we support IB and build that foundation? Well, we're looking into that now, and we're working with a feasibility team and meeting with partner schools around the region to be able to do that. We went to a training recently. I went with Matt Mello and Latisha Payne to be able to go and learn together and see if the middle years program matches our vision, our identity as a school district and as a middle school. We presented to the middle school faculty a couple of times on different aspects of IB. Our middle school will really dig deep with Superintendent Conference Day in March to talk about their foundational beliefs and our educational values. But teacher input is going to be critical to our path forward for whether or not MYP is the right fit for our middle school. And that leads us to all the ways that we are going to thrive as we go forward into the next year. We will support the whole child through our social emotional learning and mental health focus. That is going to be a top priority for us. We want to stay on the cutting edge of our innovative and research-based learning practices. That means making sure our teachers have the latest, newest information, latest, newest materials to be able to do exactly what we're learning all about the brain and learning science, whether it's the science of reading or whether it's coding. What are we giving our teachers to be able to do their best work? And how are we empowering them to lead? Teacher leadership and building that capacity is going to help us get there. And of course, we will work K12 to align our curriculum. We're already doing it now. Something I'm really excited about next year is a grant-supported pre-kindergarten pilot with one of our community's resources. We will be applying for the New York State Grant to be able to provide a pre-kindergarten class that is Putnam Valley students, and we're very, we're hoping that that expands into more classes as the years go on. We'll be offering parent workshops, helping parents talk about social media with their children, help their children read, read more to their children at night, write with their children, maybe even explore coding. Our Innovation Academy, we learned a lot about tech over the past two years. We know so much now, but there's still so much to learn, and as we know, technology is changing every day. So, let's reunite that Innovation Academy 2.0 and get our teachers learning in technology. And for full transparency with our community about what we do in our classrooms and how our scopes and sequences unfold, Curriculum and Instruction is going to have a webpage on our website where parents can go and see what we're doing in our classrooms. And this just leads us to think about what could be, and I'm just going to say right now that it's not actually a Putnam Valley dog. I don't think it's Dan Turner's dog. I believe it's the canine from the canine units that visit us recently. But increased computer science opportunities. Wouldn't it be amazing if K12 computer science looked like our K12 Mandarin Plan, where we're building that foundation in the elementary school and helping it rise through the middle and high school so that when they get to high school, they're ready and excited and know even more as they enter into IB computer science? Expansion of IB offerings in the district. If the middle school does adopt the MYP, there's no telling what else could come. Maybe universal pre-kindergarten right here on our own campus so that our pre-kindergarten children are coming here and attending school with us for all families. And maybe, maybe a facility dog to support our social, emotional, and mental health. That's definitely something near and dear to my heart. Those of you who know me, you know I have three dogs at home. I love them dearly. A lot of us are dog people, and we know research is showing the benefits of a facility dog for our needy students, our students in crisis, our students who need therapeutic support, our special education students. We know how powerful it can be, so something we can look into down the road. Some of the things that we will leave behind include the panorama contract. We need less surveys with our community and more conversations, so let's start having those. We don't need the panorama contract to let us connect with our community. We're going to provide Mandarin internally. That's going to allow us to step out of that contract with OU Bosse's and expand our offerings of Mandarin. And literacy consistency across the board, K12, will allow us to streamline our practices, thus needing less of the polled resources and needing additional supplemental materials in order to teach our children. And that's all to say we have unlimited hope. And to be honest, normal is not our benchmark. We are there. We are at normal. We're looking at the start of a path to innovation and unity in our curriculum as well as our community. And I didn't mean that to rhyme when I wrote it the first time. It just happened to happen. A colleague once said to me, "Don't prepare the path for the child. Prepare the child for the path." And that's what we do here in Putnam Valley every day. That's what you saw my colleagues from the high school do. That's what they shared. It was, it is what we do here in Putnam Valley. We help our students navigate whatever path, the many paths they will be able to have as they grow. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question on the Mandarin. Could you talk a little bit more about the change of the model?
So, yes, absolutely. We're looking to hire a Mandarin teacher to be part of our full-time faculty. Right now, we have a contract with PNW Bosse's that provides a teaching assistant in the elementary schools, and that person really just comes in for enrichment courses for each of the grade levels, K2. However, at our middle school right now, we have that TA go over to the middle school and be part of a classroom, be the physical presence in a classroom that has a virtual teacher coming in through Zoom or Skype. And what we would be able to do then is have our own teacher on site to not only teach Mandarin in the middle school, but as those students go up into the high school, expand Mandarin into the high school and provide Mandarin ongoing for them. And we will still maintain that PNW contract for a teaching assistant in the elementary school to provide enrichment. But by having our own full-time Mandarin faculty member, we will be able to continue Mandarin for all students who wish to take Mandarin into the high school and at the IB level. I believe IB does not permit a course that is virtually taught. You have to have someone on faculty.
Right. So, for several years, we have partnered with Orange Ulster Bosse's to provide a remote Mandarin teacher for grades seven, eight, and now they're up in the high school, nine, 10, 11. But it's, as we've learned throughout the pandemic, remote instruction is certainly not the most ideal model. There are limitations regarding certifications and their ability to teach IB courses. So, some students who make a commitment to IB in seventh grade, continue in eighth grade into ninth, find themselves unable to continue that same progression into 11th and 12th grade because it's not a recognized IB course. So, we, by bringing our own staff member in, we're now providing the type of in-person instruction that we know benefits students. We're providing opportunities for IB to continue through 11th and 12th grades. We're not forcing students to pick up a new language their junior year, and we're reducing the expenses that we're currently incurring with Orange Ulster Bosse's consulting, as well as a portion of our contracts with Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's in providing a teaching assistant to physically be in the middle school classes.
But I'm imagining this is essentially limited to one section of each level or grade because if there's only one teacher, depending on class size, it could be a problem, right?
So, I mean, that's based on our need. We have students complete a survey in the beginning of the year. If the, if we see an increase in the need, then we would look at additional offerings or additional ways, right? Students are taking a world language, one way or the other. So, if we start seeing a transitioning away from Spanish and towards Mandarin, we would have to adjust and meet the needs of the students as well. It wouldn't necessarily be a net increase, or at least not a substantial one, because you still have the same number of students and they can only take one language. So, it would really just be deciding who was taking which.
So, really nice, and I love the pictures of the students. The writing revolution. I'm, I'm really interested in seeing student work. I'd love to see like how they progress and have the teachers talk to us about their, that program and how excited they are. It's not that your obvious enthusiasm comes through, but, but I want to bring it down to this, to the work of students. So, I mean, later in the year, you know, like I, I don't know what's the best format, but I'd really like, we've asked for a couple of years, the board has wanted to see a progression of student work. It doesn't have to be 12 grades. It can be one, three, five, nine, you know, I don't know, something. But we'd like to see how our students are developing as writers, their actual writing, what we expect.
That sounds wonderful, and I'll work with Dr. Luft and our teachers to see what we can arrange.
So, when we added full dates, and now we're talking about pre-K, one section of pre-K? I don't understand.
So, New York State, it's really a grant-funded opportunity. So, based upon the grant funds, we would run the number of sections we could run, whether it be one or two is really what the conversation is. We would look to partner with a community organization. So, we'd be partnering with an existing provider in town and really working closely with them, whether they host it on their facility or we host it here, it would really be driven by a community partner that would work in partnership with the school district. And this would be something that we would look to cover exclusively with the grant funds that are available from New York State. And it's, it'd be based on interest, and it'd be based on, on impact. We certainly don't want to have a negative impact on the local providers, so that was the last thing that we want. Really, the hope is, right, we want, we want to gain access to students who are not otherwise attending pre-K programs because that'll be a huge jumpstart for them coming into kindergarten. But this is just a pilot year. It's grant-funded, and we really want to see how it, how it works out. So, there'll be an application process that'll go out as the time approaches.
Mrs. Yetter, did you have anything you wanted to ask? I, we don't want to ignore you.
Yeah, I have a question, if you hear me.
Okay.
Jackie, you mentioned a lot of great programs and activities, and it seems like you're focused at the middle school. My concern is, or my comment, is that we're coming out of such challenging couple of years that are you thinking of staggering these activities? Because I would hate to throw a lot of activities at these teachers and students after our challenges we've been facing.
So, thank you for that question. I think this is a wonderful time for change or for innovation. We are able to think differently. We've been forced to think differently about education for the last couple of years. And now, as we return to our classrooms, return to what we knew to be normal, now we can think about what can be new and what can be different and what can be better. So, one thing that I would say just for our teachers and for our board to know is if we are to adopt something like the MYP, that would be our teachers' focus. However, that doesn't mean we ignore good instructional However, that doesn't mean we ignore good instructional practice, as Dr. Seppi and Mr. Mello were sharing before, because that is what something like IB is. It's good teaching. And so the things we'd be teaching our, our teachers, from guided reading to how to use DRAs, is they are all part of good teaching. So we would 100% focus on the MYP while making sure our teachers are receiving regular instruction, regular professional learning, and everything that they need.
So, I couldn't agree more. Couple of years ago, we spent a lot of time talking about the need to overcome obstacles and challenges in order for real growth to occur. And if there's one positive of this pandemic that we're hopefully coming out of, is that everyone was forced to change, right? Everyone faced tremendous obstacles, and I think on the backside of this, we're going to see a tremendous opportunity for growth. So I think despite all of the efforts of our teachers over the last couple of years, that they're really primed because they've been forced out of their norm. And before we settle back into a new norm, now's the time to introduce any change. But I think the caveat to that, and something that we have to remain committed to as a district, is it has to be an in-with-the-new, out-with-the-old policy. And it cannot be a piling on of new initiatives without taking things off of their plates. So, I know our teachers are already overwhelmed, so certainly it is not our intention to give them more, but to really work in partnership with them to decide how do we best move forward, what's working, and we'll commit to that. And whatever's not working, we have to be willing to let go.
Jackie, I have a question. Can you clarify for me, are all of the hours in the professional learning that takes place after school, are they used for what the state requires from teachers within that five-year period?
Oh, I think you mean the CTLE, those 100 hours they need for their certification. They can be applied to that. We certainly don't cover all of them. Our professional learning hours are one hour a month, so approximately 10 hours. But our teachers are taking a lot of professional learning outside of the organization and with organizations we trust. So they are receiving their hours and getting their certification, maintaining their certification.
Thank you.
Jackie, I got a couple IB questions, even though I don't want to talk about IB anymore. The Middle Years Program. Are there Middle Years Program districts in our 18 district area, the Putnam area? And can you share where they are in relation to us as far as forming?
So there aren't Putnam districts that I'm familiar with. However, we are, we have several districts in the Lower Hudson Valley that are part of IB. As a matter of fact, we've met with two of them today. Mount Pleasant is one, and Palom is another. And we will be meeting soon with Somers and Harrison. And we have a few other districts we're looking into meeting with. Dobbs Ferry is one of them. So, to your first question, there are several districts in our region, I should say, that are engaged in MYP, and they are very high-achieving districts. I can't cite their statistics right now or their test scores right now, but they are very high-achieving districts.
But they've been, is, are, how far along are they as far as timeline?
Oh, in their process?
Yes.
So it depends on the district. I think Harrison has had about 12 years of implementation and is currently looking to implement PYP. Dobbs Ferry, I think, is in maybe their seventh year. Dr. Seppi might actually know that offhand, but...
You're five.
Oh, you're five. Westlake is in, I believe, year three of MYP implementation, or year four, maybe last year was year three. And Palom, I think it was about seven or eight years ago that Palom began their journey. Somers, I think, is very new. I think it's maybe year three for Somers.
So building on that, you know, you had mentioned that, how do we know if that's the path that, or the identity that our middle school wants to endeavor, to undertake? And the middle school buy-in, because it's a program that's kind of philosophy-based. And middle school being what it is, always a challenge even in the best of times, and the idea of, you know, kind of, teachers in a building takes on a culture of the students that they kind of take care of, and middle school being, again, what it is. How do you, how do you engage and understand when middle school buy-in is there and if it's a path to go down or not?
That's a good question. I think that where we need to begin is our mission, vision, and core values and our identity as a school district, but also mostly as a middle school. And comparing that to the IB learner profile, the approaches to learning, what we learn from our colleagues around the region about what they're doing and their journeys. So it's going to take some time, some fact-finding, some comparing, but really it comes down to what is our philosophy of learning here in Putnam Valley, and does that match up with what the Middle Years Program offers? And I think that, what does teacher buy-in look like? Excitement, inspiration, eagerness to get going? I think that's what it's going to look like. But I don't know. I have a feasibility team and a wonderful team at the middle school leadership that I'm, I'm working with right now, and I'm just always so awed and inspired by all of them. I really enjoyed my time working with the middle school because they already are talking about it. I had a post-observation just the other day with a teacher where she was talking about how she's trying to apply the inquiry piece to her social studies class so that she can help her colleagues and build that foundation for her students now to help her colleagues later on at the high school. So it's there. Teachers are excited about it in some small ways, and now is the time for their learning because they can't make an informed decision unless we give them as much as we know, from sending them to professional learning to sending them to partner schools to talk to other teachers who are doing it. So it's going to take some time to find out if there is all that buy-in, but I think that the inspired, excited eagerness is what we're going to be looking for.
And I'm not trying to nail down a timeframe, but how do you know when that is? Like, are we, if it is something that we have interest in? And, you know, and ultimately, this really comes down to a sales pitch of sorts from a board that's enthusiastic about the philosophy, obviously a high school that's enthusiastic about the philosophy, that, that teachers understand that that's kind of some of the thinking on a natural next step. How do you know what that timeframe is and whether it's, okay, that, that we're going to go down that road or we're not going to go down that road?
It's a great question.
So, I'm happy to share my timeline. I mean, the planning of this has obviously been discussed for, for a long time, and my time is really this year, right? This is our feasibility year. I think Jackie did an excellent job of explaining sort of, there's two things that are happening simultaneously. We're giving our staff, middle school staff, bits and pieces of information about the Middle Years Program so they could learn a little bit about it. At the same time, we're starting on the opposite end in really building our own foundation. What are our values? What's our identity? What do we believe in? What's our philosophy? And now that they know a little bit about this and we sort of learned a little bit about ourselves, then the conversation is, well, do these two things mesh together, right? Do our principles match the principles of the Middle Years Program? Does our philosophy match this philosophy? And that decision has to be made at the end of the year, right? So we're going to continue to work through this all spring as we're going to continue to learn more. We're going to continue to look more inside ourselves and see what we think. And ultimately, that decision is going to be reached by the end of the year. If that's the case, then we're going to start working on what's really probably a three-year minimum phase-in period in terms of the application process and the training. There's a ton of curriculum work and revision that needs to happen before you receive that sort of, they come and visit your school and they make sure that you are actually living up to the expectations of being a Middle Years Program. That's likely three years down the road if we decide to move that way. If we reach the conclusion, listen, our philosophy just doesn't match the philosophy of IB, that work still needs to happen, right? We just have to explore other things that now meet what our sort of core philosophy is. Maybe it's a district-wide, I mean, a building-wide adoption of LADDY, or maybe it's a commitment to project-based learning, or whatever those other things are going to be. I'm not settling for anything that's less than sort of a building-wide initiative. Like, what is, what's the one, what's the universal identity of the middle school? What's the one thing in the middle school that every teacher is going to get behind and move our kids? Because like we've seen happen at the high school, that will impact every student in every class, and we'll get better at teaching, they'll get better at learning, and everyone will ultimately benefit from when that shift is. So Middle Years Program's the first thing we're throwing out there. It's not a guarantee to happen, but if that doesn't happen, we, there will be something, right? There will be a change in that building that will unify it and get everyone moving in
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
So, before you walk away, I just got a couple, I'll embarrass you real quick. So, first of all, I just want to give another round of applause for Jackie. This was her first public presentation. I won't say that she was nervous, but I caught her mumbling to herself, practicing her speech while sitting in my office. No, it's, it's actually a humbling experience for me. For anyone who knows my history here in Putnam Valley, I think five years ago, I was hired to do the same job that Jackie's doing now. And after watching her presentation and considering the fact, six months ago, she was introducing herself and trying to learn people's names, I feel a little bad about myself because I definitely did not accomplish all of the things she has accomplished in the last eight months total, six months with our teachers. And I do want to recognize Jackie for what I think was evident throughout her presentation, her passion, her dedication, her constant optimism, and she keeps telling me, and a commitment to our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. So thank you, and it's been a privilege working with you.
Okay. Dominic, do you have a report for us?
Say, Dom hasn't spoken in a while.
Yeah. We gave him a rest.
Well, it's very difficult to follow such amazing presentations. Much of my report was already mentioned through the presentation by Dr. Seppi and Mr. Mello. But to reiterate, my congratulations to Fiona Chen and Michael Holoyak for winning Salutatorian and Valedictorian. They are amazing students. I know them personally, and they are, they are so, they work so hard, and they deserve all the credit, honestly. I'd also like to congratulate Leonard Rhine for becoming an Eagle Scout within his troop. I know that takes a lot of grit and determination and character, and he shows that constantly in school, and I want to congratulate him on that. On the 8th of February, we had a successful blood drive run by the NHS, specifically Amanda Orlando and Olivia Goncalves. We got 38 units of blood. That's quite incredible for, especially for a winter season in a pandemic. Two months ago, we got over 60, which was a record for this school. And so in totality, we've had over 90 units of blood donated from this school. And I'm very proud of that. I'm proud to donate, to have donated both times, being able to contribute not only to our community, but to a wider, wider community, a wider nation. As we all know, the Red Hook representatives came to the high school today to examine our block schedule and its integration with the IB program. I had the honor of meeting with them for a short meeting, and we had a productive and honest conversation regarding the block schedule, and I believe it went off without a hitch. They were able to interact with many students, see the school in action, and I feel they had an amazing impression. We'd love to see them again soon. We'd love to see them implement their own block schedule. Winter sports are wrapping up with the end of the winter season within your track, boys' swimming, basketball, and cheerleading, having amazing seasons. Every time I go on the school's Instagram page, all I see is accomplishment after accomplishment after accomplishment. So I'd like to congratulate all those athletes for putting in so much work and achieving so much. The class of 2023 are selling flowers for Valentine's Day. They are selling it $2 per flower, very fresh, very nice. And tomorrow's the last day to buy flowers. So if, if your children want to buy flowers for a special someone, I think now's the time. The National Science Honor Society had their induction on February 1st. It was our first in-person induction in over two years, so that was a success, being able to see all these bright, young minds be recognized for their accomplishments, and I can't wait to see what they'll do in the future. The science research program had a successful symposium, the Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, JSHS. They competed, and both Michael Holoyak and Luke Marinelli won first and second in their region, in their sections, and will move on to states with their own poster. So congratulations to them. Congratulations to Anthony Esposito for placing third in his section. In Science Olympiad, which occurred on February 8th, was a rousing success with eight medals for our first year, which is absolutely mind-blowing. I was not expecting that personally. We had tough competition, but we were able to show that Putnam Valley, even though small, we are rough and we are able to get through it. I'd like to thank Mr. McManus, who was a teacher advisor, and Victoria Helen Spitzer and Fiona Chen for running, essentially running the club as students and being able to successfully show that a small school can make it, especially in such a large regional scientific program. And in terms of spring events, those are currently in local school committees, and I will let you know as, in terms of dates and times and what that will consist of in the near future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you top that, Dr. Luff?
No, I was gonna, I know we talked about this, but I literally have almost nothing left on my page. I was gonna talk about the Science Honor Society, we spoke about that. No, last, last meeting, we spoke about the Cotonan Museum Arts Exhibition featuring many of our students. That began on, began on February 6th and runs through the 20th, I believe. We have the flyer over here. We were going to talk about the Science Olympiad and the eight medals, we know about that. Want to congratulate our valedictorian and salutatorian, we know about that. I do want to, just for testing, the home test kits, we've received some, several questions. For parents who are interested in the test, participating in the surveillance testing program, did you see the complete form? There's been several emails going out. If they complete that form, we'll send a test kit home with their students, who just sort of meander into their classroom and, and stick it in their backpack for the younger kids. The older ones could just bring it home themselves. Or we had our first drive-up distribution yesterday, and I have to say, I was astounded by the turnout. We had, we gave out over 520 kits, which is, so 1,040 tests were given out yesterday. So those tests were provided to us by the state free of charge, so obviously we're providing them to our families free of charge, and we plan on scheduling another drive-up test opportunity for our home test distribution for next Thursday, February 17th, before the break. So if anyone wasn't able to attend last time, feel free to drive by next Thursday, and more information will be sent out about that. I did want to have a brief discussion with the board regarding snow days. As many are aware, we've used four snow days, which means two snow days remain. New York State has made a snow day pilot available for this year. So what we know about the snow day pilot, it would be remote instruction in lieu of needing to make up those snow days. There are some criteria. It has to sort of resemble a typical school day, right? So our expectation would be secondary schools would follow their regular schedule, elementary school teachers would share schedules with their families so their students knew when to be on and what subjects they'd be working on. There would definitely be, having grown up in, in Putnam Valley, a strong gust of wind could knock the power out for a week. So it would certainly be determined on a case-by-case basis.
Not necessarily a strong gust of wind.
All right. A light gust of wind. I remember looking out my back window, we would just watch this same transformer explode every time the power went out. I think they put some duct tape on and a week later exploded again. So it definitely would be a determination on a case-by-case basis. The last thing I need, you know how much fun it is to close school or delay school for snow closures, but now I often have to also decide whether or not there'll be remote instruction that day. But the hope is to preserve the spring break without needing to give, give back, without having to take days back from the spring break and allowing families that, that opportunity to enjoy that time together. So we have two days remaining, so status quo for at least the next two snow days, but more will be communicated if this is the direction we decide to go. Obviously, there's some complicating factors, making sure tech, elementary school students have access to technology. Obviously, middle, middle school and high school students take their laptops home every day anyway, or can easily do so. But the elementary school is working on a plan to identify what students in each class would need a laptop. So if there's a threat of bad weather the next day, we preemptively send the laptop home with the student to make sure they had an ability to participate in the learning. So just wanted, it's a lot to throw out to, to the board. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns or thoughts regarding moving in that direction. I'll call on Dom because everyone else does. Would you rally a spring break or remote instruction?
I believe that we'd prefer our spring break over. And that the pilot program will be an interesting opportunity to see whether or not continued instruction during such a weather event will be able to happen. Of course, as we all know, when the wind blows, the power goes. So we'll see what happens.
Joe?
What he said.
I think it, it makes a lot of sense. I certainly want to be sure that, that it's a learning day. So, I mean, you know, you'll have clear expectations for what would happen if we're gonna count it as a day of learning.
Yep. And, and these conversations have already begun and will continue underway with the teachers' union. I know they sort of surveyed their teachers to this, to get a sense as to whether or not it was something they were interested in. But certainly, the expectations were shared regarding it being a synchronous, live instructional day as opposed to sort of asynchronous assignments posted on Google Classroom.
Okay.
And that's, that's not a local thing. That's actually, if you read how it's written, the pilot's written by New York State, like that is the expectation for it to mirror a typical day.
Do we have to apply or notify, or how does that work?
Uh, it's just paperwork that has to be filed sort of after the fact, like this day was remote in lieu of instruction.
Okay.
Oh, thus, P-I-L-O-T.
Um, all right, so that sounds good. Just a quick reminder, we, uh, winter recess is coming up, so schools will be closed February twenty-first to twenty-fifth. And some upcoming events, we have our next board meeting. We have presentations by our middle school and elementary school. There's an IB information night for parents, grade seven through ten, at seven PM in the high school library. And I don't know if, and a business meeting next March twenty-fourth. And then that brings me to, I gotta move seats, hold on. Come on, Dan. Hello? Everybody else took the mic off the stand, so I'm gonna try the same thing. Looks cooler. All right. So we've received a lot of questions about the federal stimulus funds that are coming to the district. And obviously, this is something that's gonna be discussed throughout the budgeting process. So I thought this was a good opportunity to give sort of a broad overview of the federal stimulus funds, some talking points about them, and then what some of our anticipated budgetary items are, how we plan on spending the money, at least initially. So the funds, most of the funds come in really two main, oops, two main categories. So the first funding name, I, I won't bore you with reading what the acronyms are, but the funding dates are between March twenty-twenty and September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And Putnam Valley is a war, or is anticipated to receive approximately one point three million dollars from these funds. The second funding source is this ARP funding source. Again, March thirteenth through twenty-twenty, and then September thirtieth through twenty-twenty-four is when we're allowed to use those. And that was approximately a million dollars. So just some highlights of this. What these funds are really meant to do is to cover short-term expenditures aimed at recovering from learning loss, finding ways to upgrade your capital improvements, making our buildings safer, air filtration, water filtration, any other way in which we can improve the health and safety of our buildings. They're needs-driven, so although we've... What are you guys all waiting in line for? Scaring me. All of a sudden, I turn around, there was a line of people behind me. Um, all right, so needs-driven. So by needs-driven, just simply means although we have to file an application with the state to get approved for how these funds may be used, we're, we're, those funds are flexible. So we have to be able to, or each year, we're able to revise that application. If we decide, you know what, this didn't work so well the first year, we want to revise where this money goes the second year, we have the ability to do so in order to make sure that the funds are used in a way that are most beneficial for our students. So capital expenditures is one way in which we plan on using some of this money, and it's a way that makes a lot of sense, right? It allows us to do projects that wouldn't otherwise be possible, but do it in a way that has no impact on our taxpayers, and to do something that has sort of a one-time expenditure and then a huge return on investment for our students, right? So we can take money, we can spend it upfront, we could create a learning space for students that will offer impacts for many years without having any additional impact on our budget. There are certainly some items in which we anticipate will have long-term impacts on our budget. And when I get to the proposed budget, you'll see some expenses. So we're already planning ahead for some of those items in which we anticipate, once this funding ends, are gonna have to become of our, become part of our general operating budget. I'll highlight some of those when I get to the next page. Feedback. So much of our expenditures are based upon feedback we elicited from both our staff and our community. Uh, we hold focus groups, we sent out surveys, and then collated that information to determine our highest priority items, and those items will be reflected in the budget. So here's a proposed or draft budget for how we plan on using some of the funds. Uh, some of these have already happened this year. As you saw, March was the start for many of these. So we've already hired an additional E and L teacher. As mentioned several times tonight, our E and L population continues to increase. That's, the need exceeded our capacity, and we've already gone out and hired another E and L teacher and closely monitor the, any potential need for more moving forward. We hired an additional nurse, so that provides us one nurse to, uh, to go district-wide. So what we had before, one nurse per building. If anyone was sick or had a personal reason, we had buildings unstaffed. And then if you look at what our nurses have been able to do and accomplish over the past several years, has really been astounding. So having a fourth nurse gives us some flexibility, some coverage, and an ability to allow them to get back to what was their job pre-COVID. Additional in-class support was like a resounding item on the feedback survey that we received from our teachers and our community. So we plan on carrying three additional teaching assistants supported through the federal stimulus funds. Additional school and lunch monitors are also being carried. Some of those have already been hired this year, and it's just providing additional support at those times when students are at lunch and recess and on the school bus. And then another item, something that we've been watching very closely over the past couple of years, is our elementary class size. Uh, we've had a couple of retirements that haven't been filled. We've had really some difficult budget discussions. At times, the state was threatening to take up to twenty percent of our state aid away. So elementary class size was certainly allowed to creep up in some areas. So this is an opportunity for us to add two additional elementary school teachers and two lower class sizes in a few grades where they're really sort of moving up to what we would consider too large for that grade level. And then some of the other items that we've already discussed that length tonight about curriculum development, professional development, uh, summer programs, so credit recovery programs, enrichment programs, E and L programs, special education programs, really any ways which it can increase the learning time for students to help them close or make up for any learning loss during the pandemic. And then the fringe benefits associated with any items that result in additional salaries. The other on the bottom is, um, so building inspections for our air and water filtration systems. So that leads to some of our capital improvements. Obviously, PPE supplies. HVAC compressor replacements, right? So making sure we have appropriate circulation in our buildings, exchanging the air and keeping our students safe. And then some of our minor remodeling projects, creation of new outdoor learning spaces at the high school, middle school campus, as well as the elementary school campus. We've done some extensive work to the elementary school modular building, which used to be classrooms in the back. It was falling in disarray, and we were at risk of losing that building as a usable space. So we've done work to that building, and now it's a potential space for pre-K or other programs to be used. We're gonna finish the restoration of the middle school restrooms and address the water filtration issues at the elementary school. So just a quick summary. These funds are provided only for reimbursement. So it was not as if the state cut us checks for those amounts and that, that money became part of our operating budget. This actually all sits separate from our general fund in a separate code. We could only be reimbursed for qualified expenses. So during our application process, we tell them what we spent the money on, and then they approve or deny that request before sending us a check back. It's limited to this defined period of time, which I shared earlier. So expenses must occur during that period of time. There is an ability to, to amend our applications, right? So we're not committing now to what'll happen three years from now. Uh, if something, we try something this summer and it doesn't work, we have the ability to change it before next summer. And then the last one is just to highlight some questions I've been asked several times, is that the funds are in no way tied to vaccine mandates or the implementation of any specific curricula. So I know I've been asked questions if we're obligated to enact critical race theory because we're receiving these funds, and the answer is no. Are we obligated to follow the state's culturally responsive framework? And the answer is no. Are we obligated to require vaccines because we're taking this money? And the answer is no. So there are no, none of those strings attached, right? There's certainly many assurances that we have to sign off on before we take these funds. Um, everything from making sure we follow cooperative bidding processes to, one of my favorites is the federal law about text driving. So if you're doing anything in the capacity of taking these funds, you cannot be texting and driving, which is an actual assurance we have to check off on. So there's a, a bunch of assurances that we check off on to be eligible for these funds, but I did want to highlight what is not included in those assurances. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions from the board regarding the federal stimulus funds?
Thank you for that. And I guess we'll see more of that when we get into the detailed budget from Jill, too.
Yeah, I just thought it was, it was important to introduce it, right? So these are all things that are possible be, because of the federal stimulus funds. When we get into the nuances of the budget and the line-by-line items, what you're gonna see, and I know Jill and I are already working on our presentation, in, in some ways, um, some of these expenditures will show up on the general fund side. So the best example of that is for the capital improvements. So if we pay for the capital improvements on our general fund side, we receive state aid. Sixty to seventy percent of those expenses come back to our community in terms of aid. So in order to make that happen, we have to take an expense out of the general fund and put it into the federal stimulus funds just until the capital project is done, and then the sort of swap goes back. So it gets complicated. I wanted to sort of, this is the first time of many we'll talk about this, but these are the things that are possible because of the federal stimulus funds. But how they show up in the budget will vary depending upon what the greatest impact for the Putnam Valley community and taxpayer is in terms of receiving the most state aid we can get. So, uh, more to come.
Jeremy?
Yes. Sorry, I was looking for you. You freaked me out for a second.
Sorry. Can you repeat what's not included? For example, the vaccines, the masks, et cetera? I think it's really important we get that point across.
Yeah, I know that, uh, the question has been brought up several times and that none of the assurances in there have anything specific to vaccine mandate, vaccine mandates, implementation of any specific curricula. Uh, there are clauses in there to talk about maintenance of equity efforts, which if anyone wants to hear like what that means, I'm happy to do so. Uh, there's, there's assurances in there that we'll do our best to abide by CDC regulations in terms of mitigation strategies to keep schools open and things like that. But there's nothing in there that is in any way tied directly to vaccine mandates or specific curricula.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. Item one, please.
Resolve the recommendation superintendent of schools to appoint Elizabeth Imbragno to probationary appointment as a school monitor effective January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Probationary period fifty-two weeks, January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, at the elementary school in step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolve on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised external audit corrective action plan for the twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year external audit as per document one hundred and twenty-four slash twenty-two attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So this was, this was what we had talked about. Might have been the last meeting, as far as, um, their memo to us as to what their recommendations were and telling us what we did and didn't do, and we're saying these are the things we're going to be doing.
Actually, this is the correction, corrective action plan that is in response to our annual audit. The state required, this is not the same corrective action plan that you're talking about.
Same thing, different audit.
It's a different audit.
Okay.
Same idea.
Yeah.
This is not the data.
So the update...
This is not the technology.
The update that was required was, um, we commented on their comments, and then at the end of the comments, they wanted a date for every, every comment that they made, they wanted an implication date, implementation date. So we needed to add that implementation date to the corrective action plan in order for them to accept it on the business portal for New York State Education Department. So we had to add it, and then we have to adopt it to make sure that everyone is aware that we added the date.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolve to set the following dates for action regarding the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three district budget vote and board election, May third, twenty-twenty-two. Final budget hearing, seven PM at the high school cafeteria. May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, budget vote and board election at the elementary school from six AM to nine PM.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolve to approve the notice of public budget hearing, budget vote, and election for the Putnam Valley Central School District as per document one hundred and twenty-five slash twenty-two attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolve to authorize clerk of the district to arrange and enter into contracts for voting machines, poll books, to have the necessary ballots printed, and to make other arrangements for the district budget vote and board elections scheduled for May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, as are necessary and appropriate. The resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolve to nominate Tina McKay as a candidate for a three-year term effective July first of twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five for the Board of Cooperative Education Services for the Putnam and North and Westchester.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just so everybody knows, Tina has served well as our, as a representative, uh, as a board member to BOSI's and has the region always in mind, as well as our district specifically, as a former board member that was here for a while. Top-flight candidate.
Yeah, I'm glad she's running again. Yeah, I'm glad she's running again. So she does represent us well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, I'd like to open up for public comment on any topic. While the board historically provided great leeway regarding the three-minute time limit for public comments, in the event that the speaker is sharing hateful, hurtful, judgmental, inaccurate, or otherwise inappropriate comments, no such extension of time will be allowed. The board wants to hear from the community. We want to hear specifically about your child and your child's experiences in our schools. So, the mic is open for public comments. Please introduce yourself. I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry. I turned the mic off.
Oh, I can yell. My name is Miranda Zaki-Gretz. I have a seventh grader and a new coming kindergartner coming into the school. First, I want to say a comment. I am very appreciative for the full-time float nurse. I think it's an excellent addition and extremely important. Second comment, nothing will be normal for nurses after COVID. The other thing, I just have a question. Well, maybe two, I'm not sure yet. First question, how many languages are offered for middle school and high school? That's my question.
So we have two languages at the middle school and three languages at the high school.
So how many languages are there out in the world?
Way more, way more than that.
Way more? Is there a number?
I'm sure there is.
Like a little over 6,000?
Yeah.
So, I mean, diversity is a big topic. I feel like, well, I don't feel like, I kind of see that this is not a good diversity thing with two languages offered, two languages offered and there's over 6,000 languages? Who makes that decision?
So I could say the decision is based upon student interest. We used to offer French in the middle school. There wasn't enough student interest to sustain the program. So that's why we went down to one at one point. And then Dr. Wells had introduced the idea of Mandarin and surveyed students and there was a great deal of interest in that and that's why they bought up.
So did they vote on that? Is that how we knew the students wanted that language?
No, the students go through a selection process. If students weren't interested in taking that, then, then it wouldn't have been offered. We would have tried to do something else.
I, I would like to see students be able to vote, maybe this year. See what languages they may like, even if it goes nowhere. I think there should be something out there for all of our students to be able to vote on a language that they choose. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Reardon and I'm a parent from Maia Pace district and I am a member of the Parent Advocacy Subcommittee. And I know that all schools really want parent involvement. Unfortunately, Putnam Valley doesn't have this committee. Our committee had worked together to write a letter to our governor and it was actually signed by the board's president. As you know, we are very concerned about mandates that could be coming down and I really don't quite believe what you said, that there's not going to be a tie, you know, to accepting money and not pushing or having the mandates. I, I really, come on. We already see what's happening and you can't tell me that you're not going to have to follow, you know, the state and health department and all of that. I mean, you can't, you can't say that for sure. You know, it's, it's nice to say, but it's not true. You know, once the state says it, you take their money, you're going to have to abide and you're, you're in handcuffs. And then you're going to lose even more students because the parents are going to be homeschooling, moving, you know what's happening. New York's just losing people nonstop. So the letter that was written, it was actually written in December and we're actually putting another one together on behalf of the parents. But most importantly, the board is working with us. They're working with their parents. So I'm very grateful to be in the Maia Pace School District and have a board that's working with me and with many other parents as well. So I'm just going to briefly read, you know, they wrote, "On behalf of the Maia Pace Central School District Board of Education Advocacy Subcommittee, the Maia Pace Central School District believes in local control for our school districts. We believe in the health and safety of our students and staff in addition to providing the highest quality education possible. We believe schools from all areas of the state with their own diverse needs and contexts should have the choice to make local decisions regarding school protocols, state mandates, and other restrictive regulations related to the COVID-19 pandemic that impact the quality of our children's education and their social and emotional well-being. This includes but is not limited to mandates and rules relating to masks and quarantine policies for students and staff. We demand answers to important questions that impact the future of state COVID-19 mandates. We want to know what metrics are being used and what metrics will be used to achieve our desired local control on masks, quarantine policy, et cetera. Some of the metrics we are requesting information about are the percentage of positive cases, of quarantine students, infection rates by county zip code, and school districts, and so on." So this is a board, Maia Pace's board is actually working with a group of parents and I think it builds a stronger community and I would really recommend that you consider having a group join your, you know, building and be part, you know, hear their voices, hear their concerns because you always say it, you know, it's all parent-parent engagement. You know, seeing a kid, you know, on a soccer field or something, that, that's great, but you know, this is business. This, this has to be done. The kids are suffering long enough. You know, they're walking around suffocating themselves here, you know, and, and being reprimanded for, you know, having a mask, you know, two inches below their nose or something. I mean, come on, let's be for real already. I mean, it's your choice. You want to wear it? That's what it should be. But come on, you got to start working, I think, a little bit more with parents and I think this advocacy committee would be an excellent start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby O'Brien. I'm a graduate of Putnam Valley Schools. I came through when there was child side in first and second grade. I'm also the vice chair for Moms for Liberty for Putnam County, which myself and Krista have started out of Putnam Valley. We have grown our group, which is a nationwide group and our chapter has 70,000 members of people who are fighting for many different reasons for our kids to be unmasked. I'm also, most importantly, the mom of four children. I have three kids in the elementary school. This is my youngest in the school and she's never been to school without a mask. She says her friends' faces are too confusing without a mask. When they play school, they play with masks on and they take each other's temperatures. This is affecting them on levels that I think it can only be seen as a parent of these little guys. The middle schoolers and the high schoolers, they aren't conforming. My son at the winter festival wouldn't walk through the school's doors without putting his mask on and I was with him. It was an event that the parents take him to and he was so afraid. A day in the life of me is running around in the morning trying to figure out which kid likes which mask and which one's going to fit throughout the whole day. This one only likes the white ones, which she gets from the bus driver, who told her today that, that he likes masks. He told my kids today that he likes masks and it's on the bus footage because they were on the bus when it was said. They're on E1. So after looking for the masks, I finally get them off to school. They come home, they tell me about how in music class, they're singing a song about sit on your black dot and keep your mask on. They aren't having, they just started having Girl Scouts, I think, back in the school where for a long time it wasn't allowed to be held in the school. I remember being a Girl Scout and staying after school with my friends. These are things that are taken away from them. I'm trying to hold the job. My husband's hurrying a job, but we get calls that our children, thankfully, not so much anymore. But we're being quarantined. Masks, I walked into the school, I told Dr. Podesta, "The masks aren't working." And they said, "Mrs. O'Brien, yes, the masks do work." And I said, "Well, my son was wearing a mask, the teacher in front of him was wearing a mask, but here I am during the middle of my workday picking up my son because he was exposed from a teacher while they were both wearing a mask." So the masks aren't working because there I stood, having to leave my job. All I'm asking is, in regards to what was just spoken about, about the letter, to survey the parents of this school, see how many of us want our children to be forced to wear these masks. You can make the decision now when you walk into a restaurant, into a financial banking institution, into the grocery store if we want to wear a mask, but they still have to be forced to wear a mask. Survey the parents, see what, what they feel. If the majority of us feel that we don't want our children to be forced to wear the masks every day, would you consider signing a letter and working with us to advocate for our kids? I also have up here the letter, the requirements for the funding and it says right here that the local education, I guess, agency, is it? Must plan to include how it will maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and other school and local education agency, staff, and a description of its policies it has adopted regarding each of the CDC's safety recommendations, including universal and correct wearing of masks, modifying facilities to allow for physical distancing, distancing, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including ventilation, contact tracing, diagnostics screening and screening and efforts to provide vaccination to school communities. So if you had to put forward what you guys were going to do in regards to that to get these funding, and it can be changed every six months, I'm hoping this was in the beginning. But as I walk through the school hallway, the banner that could say anything we want says, "Reminder, please keep your mask on." So I just hope that you guys would consider to maybe survey, survey the parents because these kids are suffering. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica London, I'm over in Holly Street in Putnam Valley. And, you know, Abby was talking a little bit about the masks. I actually did a brief survey and there are a lot of parents that are on here and I don't want to publicly put out their names, but if I may give you a list of people who were surveyed. Thank you. Who would love to send their child to school without a mask. But besides that, I'm going to tell you, I was honestly listening to your presentation tonight on the curriculum and you were talking about the ENL Academy. And Dr. Luft, I don't know if you remember my email to you back in August of this year, of last year, where I was making a recommendation to have some kind of support for parents to help educate their children a little bit better when it came to their reading? And here you are, offering support through the ENL Academy to those parents while brushing my suggestion under the rug. I have had a tutor for my second grader since the beginning of this year to get her up to the reading level that she needed to be. And you know what? She is excelling, but not every single parent has the opportunity and the financial support to do that. So here I am, listening. You're going to support people in those households, but totally disregarded my suggestion? Insulted as a taxpayer in this community? Because all these children in elementary right now, the first graders, the second graders, they are struggling. You're putting up all these IB programs and all these other things where you're educating your teachers, but you're failing our children. The elementary students are suffering in their reading and in their math. I don't see any statistics, I don't see any testing, you don't put any of those things up on these boards, but I see it in my daughter, you know? And thank God, we're there. Two hours last night, we spent with her between her reading, her math, and all the other things that we need to do to support her to be a better student, to ultimately get to these IB programs and be a scholar and go to college. But here we are, you're not talking about these numbers, you're not talking about the support, and when I actually gave a very valid point to help and do a workshop for just parents, because I don't know you have to reread the same page, you know, with a child. I didn't know about swooping and that was all outlined in the email. You know, I learned that from paying another teacher to help us. And I would share those resources with parents that I knew because they don't know it either. But here you are, you said something about state requirements, about ENL, but you're forgetting about us, you know? I'm very insulted, I am very, not very happy right now. My other recommendation to the board is you were talking about your assurances about grant money. Could we get a little bit of transparency when it comes to that? Because this SFR money, as Abby was pointing out, is tied to having masks on the children, right? So maybe before we apply for a grant, could we just understand as a community and as parents, what is really tied to that money? What assurances do we need to fulfill as a community in order to follow through with that grant money? Just a recommendation, that's it. You know, I'm a taxpayer in this community, I'm a mom of a beautiful second grader who wants only the best, not only for my child, but for everybody else's child in this room today. You know, we're talking about these masks, you know, and I look at the pictures that you guys share on, you know, the Facebook and all that. And, you know, these children have their masks properly put on, but I can always ask myself, you know, because I'm also a Girl Scout leader in the community and these kids aren't wearing their masks, you know? Is a photographer saying, "Okay, let's fix our mask correctly so we could take our picture and put it out there on the district website," you know? Just some food for thought, you know, as a concerned, you know, taxpayer and parent in this community. So I thank you guys for your time and your service, you know, it takes a lot.
Thank you. Just can I, I just want to address the first issue. So I know we're focusing on one ENL parent academy. That's one of a wide range of activities. In fact, I can say the reading recovery program actually began last year. It was the first program we initiated using what will be our federal stimulus funds. We identified students in, in grades first, I think K-1, we identified students. Those students stayed after school, the parents came and picked them up, they stayed after for additional reading support. I know that Ms. Levine is already working on an expanded program for reading recovery. Our teachers are identifying students and that will 100% be part of a piece of how those funds are sharing. And if you go back and look at Ms. Levine's presentation, parent workshops in general for all parents is one of our initiatives this year. To go back to, we used to hold math nights and have parents come in and teach them about the math and teach them strategies, how to support their students. We invite parents in to learn about the reading programs or the writing programs and how they can support. So all of those things that you had brought up this evening will 100% happen. And it's not all about that all this money is going to one specific group. This money is going to every student we serve regardless of their background. So reading recovery, parent workshops, and ENL Academy are all part of our plans for spending this money this year. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Well, I appreciate that because when it was, you know, on the slide, it was specified that the parent workshops were tied to the ENL, not necessarily to everybody else involved. So I'm very happy to hear that.
No, I understand, that's why I wanted to address any confusion.
Okay. And yeah, you know, a little bit more support in the elementary school. You know, you have all these programs out there for the high school, middle school, but not too many going on for the kids. Any extracurricular activities that we have, you know, those are provided only through the Parks and Rec, not through our district. So another recommendation might be to have more extracurricular for the elementary school. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Krista Straub. I'm the Putnam County Moms for Liberty Chapter Chair. Members were here tonight. It's good to see them speaking out. Our chapter was launched in December 2021. We empower and inform parents across the county on all school and BOE decisions and New York State law. We formulate plans on how to advocate for our children in effective ways that can change policy for the better of our children. I should thank you for bringing us all together. We're united, the parents, we want what's best for our children. Just as the school's motto is the child first and foremost, we're not feeling that, the parents that are here. So I'm happy that they can talk about their children and share their experience a little bit. So I have a question. I had recently sent you, the board, an email with the vaccine, from the Health Department, the survey about vaccine mandates for the 5 to 11. And you had responded. Was that email written by you or your law firm?
It said an email from me?
It was from the president.
No, it wasn't. It was from me.
It was in regards to having the letter that Melissa spoke about and the survey from the Department of Health that shows 53% of the parents want choice on vaccines. So you responded, and it was the day, actually. So it was the day of the big Supreme Court case where your lawyer, Judge Shaw, Harrison, Mary Lambert. Are they related to anybody on the panel?
On the board? No.
No? Okay. So they advised you, right, that day?
They advised who? Me? They did not advise me.
Did they advise anybody?
Sorry, you lost me. Are we talking about the letter or are we talking about the mask piece?
Okay. The day of the Supreme Court mask decision.
Did they advise us regarding the fact that the stay was in order and mask for mandatory?
The stay wasn't in order. The stay was in order the next day.
Okay.
They advised you that the stay was in order.
Correct. That it was automatically in order based upon civil service law. I won't even try to...
Right. So your response, right, was what they advised you to do?
Correct.
Correct. So how do we, how long have we been with this law firm?
A long time.
Like forever?
We actually just recently went out for an RFP to explore new law firms.
Because there were other legal advisors across the state that advised their school district differently. So I guess my question is, are these lawyers biased to a certain extent? How are they, I mean, I looked at the website. I saw some of the articles and speakings that they did. It didn't seem that they were pro-child, child first and foremost. It seemed more of a pro-government type lawyer. So I guess my question is, if they are pro-government and they're advising you, then what happens to us and our children?
So I think my quick answer is, I was on a call with 62 superintendents that evening. Those 62 superintendents use a wide range of attorneys.
Right.
There's only one attorney group in this region that I know of that advised their districts differently than what ours did. So it was not Shaw was the only one that advised that. A vast majority of law firms gave districts the same advice.
They gave it a similar type.
I only know of one law firm that advised otherwise. And as you're aware, all of those then had to recant those statements and go back to mandatory masks the following day.
Well, they had to because the stay was put through, not because. So there was one day, okay? So I guess that's it for the lawyer. But so here's the thing. When I start asking these questions, and I got this response, I don't think you wrote it, Mrs. Palmerly. I think your lawyer did.
No, ma'am.
Because it went into like the efficacy of masks and about the case. The efficacy of masks was never part of the case. It was unconstitutional because the governor overstepped her authority. So the email I got back was completely, I didn't understand that. It had nothing to do with who believes in masks or who. She overstepped her authority. That's why it's unconstitutional. And I don't feel that we have people that are advocating for us here and for our kids. We hear diverse and equity and inclusion, but where is it here? Do you think you're diverse? Do you have diverse ideas? You do?
Yes.
Okay. So the problem is that we don't feel that, you know? I mean, it's a simple letter. Why couldn't, like, all the emails I sent, just one simple letter. Why? Why not?
I mean, I think we've discussed advocacy letters before. It's the board's opinion that a public school board is not their position to write advocacy letters regarding public health. But that being said, many of us belong to professional organizations, myself included. I signed off on an advocacy letter that asked for many of the same things you did. I know Ms. Palmerly is a member of the West PUD, which is a political action, but an advocacy group of superintendent, I mean, of board members from around the region, and they're working on an advocacy letter that says essentially the same thing. So it's not a matter of we're not individually advocating for these things. We're doing it through professional organizations that are built to advocate for change. It's just the feeling of us, and I know there's some exceptions, but a vast majority of boards in the region, that this is not the appropriate forum. It's not under the Constitution or the oath of office that individuals take to advocate for public health change. The issue is, if we take a stance regarding this public health issue, the next time there's a public health issue and everyone swarms in here, is the board expected to take a stance on that? And what about the next time? And what about the next time? That's not our role, right? Our role is to serve the students that we educate here every day. Nobody here is a doctor. Nobody here is a public health official. So we don't feel as if a statement from the board serves any purpose to those means. But it doesn't mean that those advocacy efforts aren't still taking place.
You know what? You're not giving medical advice, but giving parents choice. That's not, the law not asking you to tell people what to do with their kids. You guys are trying to tell me what to do with my kids. That's not the, the point of this.
I just want to make clear. We're not trying to tell you anything.
The governor is.
We're delivering a message that was given to us. Okay.
But you're reinforcing it, right, by not telling the governor, we're from Putnam Valley School District, and we support the parents that want choice. Like, why is this so hard?
Krista, this is not hard. The, you know, the letter you read is almost exactly what is being promoted through NISBA and West PUD. It is almost exactly the idea of looking for metrics and a way to get to an end to this. It's almost exactly the same message that is trying to get through, through those channels that we are a part of.
Looking for metrics to make local decisions is not giving parents choice. Do you understand that? I don't care how many kids in the 5 to 11 are vaccinated. The governor sent yesterday.
No, 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 sorry. I just want to correct you. The metrics we're talking about is the state to provide metrics for when masks can be optional.
But it's levels of vaccination. It's levels of transmission, right?
I don't know. I don't make those.
That's what the letter said that I read in the article. That's what it said. So...
So do you want us to do a letter or not do a letter? I don't understand. Because you're just suggesting that that letter, which you're holding up as the letter that you want us to put through, but now you're saying that you don't want us to put through a letter that is about metrics. It's the same message.
Parents' choice is not metrics.
But you're the one who advocated for sending that letter.
Yeah, okay. So?
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
We want you to just write a letter. I don't understand why it's so difficult.
It's not difficult because it's not an issue. It's not our place for that to happen.
But Brewster and Meyer pack think it is.
So maybe, so they do.
Okay. You don't think that. You don't believe in.
I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is that we are, we work through the channels that we typically work through. And a letter from the board saying that we, kind of the open blanket, and the idea of making, us making that decision, is not something that is our place. We are part of the state government. Putnam Valley Central School District is part of the state government. So while some of us or all of us may have a feeling of when and when not to have masks, when and what and what vaccines to include and what's needed to go to school, is almost irrelevant, possibly totally irrelevant, because it is the, we are, we are, I shouldn't say trapped, we are confined, and we are held accountable towards...
Well, you're trapped. I mean, we'll all just leave. I mean, your enrollment's already going down. The principal said it three times during her presentation.
Actually, our enrollment is up by 166.
In the high school?
Over, no.
Well, I'm referring to the high school presentation today, so...
I could clarify that. The district has never seen as many students enrolling in our schools than we have in the last two and a half years. We have 166 new students enrolling in our schools. So our enrollment for new enrollees is going up. What Dr. Seppi was saying is that when you compare the size of classes of cohorts that have come through the school versus the size of cohorts that are coming into the school, that's the overall decrease. We're graduating classes of 150 students. We're taking in classes of 100 students. That's been the trend for the last six or seven years. So that has nothing, that predates the pandemic or any conversation of the pandemic. So the overall decrease in enrollment of our district, which is a fact, is based upon the size of kindergarten cohorts dating back 10 years. We're graduating, and you can go back and look at any of the enrollment reports. The classes that are graduating are larger than the classes that are coming in. As those smaller classes move through the grades, we end up with less students. But if we're talking about students leaving the district...
That's because people go to private school after elementary school and...
But see, that's what I'm talking about. When you're talking about people starting school and leaving, when you're looking at attrition rates, it's typically a wash. We track it every year. If I gain 90 students, I lose 90 students. That's a typical trend for the last five years. Over the last two years, we have gained 166 more students than we've lost. So parents are moving into our school district.
In the kindergarten area.
No. This is, this is all grades. This isn't kindergarten. This is students moving in across all grade levels. This is new students in, not new kindergarten students.
Okay.
It well exceeds the number of students that are leaving. I just want to correct that because that's come up several times.
Okay. So you don't think that if this vaccine mandate goes through, you won't lose enrollment? That's what, that's what you're saying?
I would have no way...
Well, that's what was in the email I got back from someone who wrote it. I don't know who, we don't know who wrote it yet.
I would have no way of knowing whether that's the case or not. I have no way of knowing whether a vaccine mandate will ever come.
I hope not. You should write a letter. Why, why, can we go back to that, please? Just write it.
Is there anything else you want to talk about?
Uh, let me see. No, that's it.
Thanks, Krista.
Have a good night.
Hello there. My name is Bill O'Donnell. I am the Putnam County Libertarian Party Chairman. I came out today to support the Moms for Liberty. I wasn't planning to speak, but a couple of things about your various presentations prompted me to speak. You have a whole thing there about the emotional, social, and mental health of children that this young lady spoke about. I seriously don't believe that wearing masks all day promotes any of those things. Your IB program talks about risk-taking. You have high school kids who statistically have a 0% chance of dying if they do get this disease. And most of them don't even get it. They don't get any symptoms. They have to be tested to find out if they've even been exposed. And you're teaching them to take risks while they all wear a mask to protect them from a disease that's unlikely to harm any of them beyond the sniffles if they get that? It seems a little contradictory. I really wanted to point that out. I thought that was a bit, a bit odd. Libertarian Party stands on the notion that nothing should be mandated. Good ideas should not require force. You should do the study. You should make the information available. Parents should make decisions for children. Adults should make decisions for themselves. No one should be making decisions for anyone else, whether it's government, whether it's school boards, whether it's teachers, even doctors. Even if it's a deadly disease, I want to choose. I'm going to die. You're going to die. We're all going to die. So I'd like to live my life as free as possible until that day, and I'll make what I think are intelligent decisions. I'll look at the evidence. I'll listen to your arguments. I may decide to take your vaccines. I may decide to wear the masks. I may decide to jump off a cliff. It's my life. I'm not hurting anyone else. You're free to protect yourself as you see fit, and so is everybody else. And I just wanted to say that. I support these women and their children. The kids are suffering, and you may not have anything to do with medical. I understand from a medical point of view why you don't want to challenge this law, but you're in the Education Department. You educate these kids. You see these kids all day. You can't tell me this isn't having a negative effect on them. These moms aren't lying. They're not coming out here at night just to bother people. They have better places to be. Frankly, so do I. We all do. They're out here because their kids are dying. They're suffering. They're miserable. You have mental health issues on young teens, particularly teen women. It's just getting out of control. And yes, there's a, there's an argument about whether it's science, but you're educators. You can, you can write a letter if you choose to from that point of view. Tell them what you see in your classrooms or what you see when you're on these Zoom calls and all the rest of it. Tell them how the grades are doing. Tell them how well or how poorly these kids are doing compared to two or three years ago. You certainly have that data. That certainly is your prerogative. You don't have to be medical doctors or scientists to decide to write such a letter, and I hope you'll consider doing so in support of these women, more importantly, in support of the children. And yeah, I'll end it there, but I just wanted to address that.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up, Sam. I'm going to fill the time as you meander up there. So I just want to restate something that I know I've stated on many occasions, and I will continue to do so. As soon as New York State removes the mask mandate, masks will be optional in Putnam Valley. I don't care what the ESSR regulations that were written probably 12 months ago when this document was created and the CDC guidance, and we weren't even talking about this, doesn't necessarily matter to me. I've written in almost every communication I've sent out, not only am I advocating for metrics for when masks could become optional, but the second that happens, that will be my recommendation. So I know we talk a lot about advocacy, and there's language in here that makes it sound like I don't have a choice, but that's not my understanding. And it's certainly my intention to recommend that masks will be optional as soon as I have the ability to do so. I'm not the governor. I'm not a public health official. I don't work for the DOH. I certainly advocate for that day to come, and I personally cannot wait for that day to come. But we're doing everything we can do with what we have. And the second that's no longer required, then that'll be the change that we'll make. So I just want to make sure everyone in here knows that. It's something that has been shared many times in this community, but just want to reiterate it again. So you're, Sam?
Thank you, Dr. Luft. Just a personal comment on the personal choice issue. I do agree with the parents that, I really disagree with our governor at this point in time, opening up the door to no masks in businesses and banks in every area. I went to Walmart. Half the place had masks on, half didn't today because it's the first day you don't have to wear them. It really sends out a message of confusion, and it's not your fault. This is from the governor's office. And having been involved in government for a long time, I understand the mandates that we have to follow, or you risk, you know, the wrath of those individuals up in Albany, and that's a damn shame. I mean, a real shame. So I sympathize with the parents who would like the ability to have choice. I'm not a doctor. I don't know whether the masks work or not. I've seen so many people who have worn masks nonstop get sick. I, I've seen so many people who have worn masks nonstop get sick, and those who have worn masks not get sick. So I, I don't know the metrics either. I don't, I, I couldn't make a decision, but I think the parents are parents, and it's their job to parent, not the governor. And for that, I, I stand with them. But my, my main issue, Dr. Luft, in your presentation tonight, talking about the surplus money, the stimulus money, I, I hope you keep in mind that the minute you use that money for staffing, and you talked about that, you have increased the budget for years to come. And that's a difficult maneuver, because the money runs out, you have these individual, unless you're doing it as, only as long as the money lasts, which we've done, you know, many times in town. We've got money, we have a position, run it for two years, and then it, it's bye-bye. I don't know if that's your procedure, and that's my question. What's your take on that?
So, I mean, you're absolutely right. Really, staffing was the last thing we wanted to spend it on, because it forces you into a situation where you have to let those individuals go when the, when the funding runs out, or you have to then find space within your general fund to support them. So my answer is there'll be a mix, and it'll be based upon needs at that time. Right? We're introducing, there's a reason why we're treating our budget, our general fund budget has an additional elementary school teacher, because when we look down at the size of the grades coming up, we know we're going to need that extra teacher. So that teacher is budgeted for in our budget, and it's an expense we plan on carrying for many years. The reason why the two additional teachers are not in our general fund, they're being used to reduce class size. It's my belief that if we reduce class size, it'll help those teachers have a greater impact on students that have had experienced learning loss. But if that only lasts two years, because that's where you could afford it, you know what? Those students benefited from those two years. At the end of those two years, you have some smaller classes coming up, maybe some larger classes leaving, then my hope for those individuals would be there's been an opportunity for attrition. Right? Maybe they've taken the spot of a retiring teacher, so we're not losing actual people. But the belief is that many of those positions would go away and not become part of the general fund. The tax levy cap handcuffs districts in what we can spend. So the reality is, even if I wanted to keep all those positions, it would require something else being pulled out, right? So if I wanted to keep a million dollars of staffing, well, that's essentially a million dollar reduction I have to make for my general fund...
Exactly.
...in order to make room for them.
Okay. So the bottom line would be that, you know, it's, it's almost a day-by-day type of decision that you'll be making with that funding.
Right. And I had mentioned a couple of, the E and L teacher, I believe, is here to stay. That's not a need that's going to go away. I'm very supportive of the additional nursing position. I know how difficult it is to find a quality nurse, so that's a position that I would keep. But those are really the only two at this point that I would be willing to commit to for the long term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jill Figarella, District Treasurer. So I just want to remind everyone, we will be having four one-hour sessions directed toward budget information. Our first one is going to be this Wednesday, February 16th, at 2:15. I believe it's at the elementary school. And we will have three others, but they will be held at different times, so this way we can try to capture as much of the community or whoever would like to attend at different times, so we can make it available for them too. It's basically going to be informal meetings to help community members get really a deeper understanding of the budget process, but it will be based on their questioning. I'm not going to stand there and make a presentation about budget. You'll hear that at board meetings. It's more or less, what questions do you have? What are you wondering about the budget? How can we get people out to vote? The voter turnout is very low, as everyone knows with the tax cap, you know, putting us in a restricted, you know, a restricted environment is really not helping with voter turnout from year to year. So that's something we can go over at those meetings, so I want to invite everyone to come. There is going to be a limitation on the number of people we could accommodate based on the space, but we have a, a place on our website where you can sign up to come, and also there's a survey question there if you'd like to submit questions before you come or bring questions with you. So Wednesday, February 16th, 2:15 at the elementary school. Thank you.
Sorry, it just keeps going on. I did want to circle back to Ms. O'Brien's statement before. I pulled up the policy, and I knew that there was something in here that provided sort of the nuance we need. So it's the same statement you read before. I'll just cut to the chase of the part where it says, "In this, in the description of any policies it has adopted regarding each of the CDC's safety recommendations, including universal and correct wearing of masks, so on, so on, so on," right? That's the same clause you read before. So my stance would be, the board has not adopted any policies related to universal masking. We have not had a policy reading, we have not adopted any policies, and only the Board of Education can adopt policies related to mask wearing. So my answer, if someone were to question that, would be, we do not have a policy related to universal mask use or whatever else, correct wearing of masks, and therefore we would not be held to that as part of our ESAR application. So I did want to circle back around. I apologize for being on my computer, but I was just pulling up that language.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Dr. Luft, you kind of gave us the topics and presentations for the next couple of meetings. So board members, do you have any comments on any topics? Or Dominic, or anybody else up here? Jeanette, you okay? She's still there?
She's waving.
She's waving, okay.
I can't get off my, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So then I would like a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
Second.
All in favor?